Madam Clerk, would you take the roll?
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Here.
Chair Onstott?
Here.
Commissioner Kessley?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Ladies and gentlemen, a few matters we need to discuss. There is going to be an earthquake test here in the building at 10:19. We didn't want to interrupt testimony during that, so what we'll do is take a break at 10:15, and then you can do as you will regarding cover and et cetera. It'll last for about a minute and a half. I'm told we're going to have noises of earthquake and whatever, so you can either get into it or just get outdoors. Now's the time set aside for public comments for matters not appearing on the agenda. I have one speaker card for that. How do you pronounce your name, sir?
McCallie.
Would you please give your full name and address? Richard McCallie, 8775 Mipolomo Road, Malibu. I'm here this morning to bring to your attention problems that we have in our community regarding fire threat. And in light of what we've experienced in Santa Rosa over the last week, I think it's time that we really look at the conditions that exist in the Santa Monica Mountains where I live, and to review what we've been doing up there and what planning has ordinances that have come through planning and are coming through planning that really exaggerate our threats and don't allow property owners to protect their property and their families from an event that can very easily be more dramatic than what happened in Santa Rosa. And the main reason for that is because during Santa Ana time, which is probably from October through May now, we get every week very severe winds. For example, a week ago Saturday night, I went to bed. It was foggy, 100% humidity. By 8 o'clock in the morning, it was 15% humidity, and I had a wind gust of 80 miles an hour. The winds can turn on a dime. In 1992, the Western Regional Climate Center, that has a weather station at the top of Laguna Peak, registered a 125 mile an hour gust. About several years ago during a Santa Ana event, I went to bed at about 10 o'clock at night with about 20 mile an hour winds. By 2 o'clock in the morning, they had hit 90. This is documented by the Western Regional Climate Center. By 7 o'clock, they hit 100. Two hours later, they hit 109, and for three days, the winds did not go below 70 miles an hour. Imagine surrounded by explosive chaparral. What will happen to the people who live in those mountains if we have the misfortune of having a fire start during those wind gusts? It would be explosive. It would run to the coast within minutes, trapping everybody out there in their homes where their only chance of survival is what they have done to protect themselves before those winds actually started. We have a Santa Ana event coming in the next week. It'll be interesting to see how intense it is. But we have these every week. Santa Rosa had it once in a while. The opportunities, and it'll be a monster when it comes at us. We need your help. We need you to review all the ordinances that have been approved in light of the dangers that it creates for the people living out there. And I know that there are new ordinances coming your way through the local coastal plan on ESHA. This again will ratchet down and make it increasingly difficult for us to protect ourselves in a firestorm. The firestorm will come. The question is when and how devastating it will be for the people who live out there. So your consideration for this matter, I think, is not only urgent, it's extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Just a moment. Stay there, sir. Madam Director, are matters pending that we're unaware of regarding changes of ordinances dealing with fire protection in the Santa Monica Mountains? Is anything happening of any particular note?
Yes, Chair Onstott, the planning staff is working with the board's direction to prepare an environmentally sensitive habitat overlay in the Santa Monica Mountains. So that has layers of protected species like the coastal sage scrub. But the fire department maintains 100-foot brush clearance, and that is not proposed to be changed. It's 100-foot now. It's going to be 100-foot at the end of the ESHA. And so there's not a proposed change there, although we're drafting regulations, and we'll be out in the community, and we will hear from the community probably in the next five or six weeks. So we'll hear what they have to say then. But the fire department is very much involved with the drafting of the regulations.
Have you been in contact with the fire department?
I am in contact. In the brochure that I have, the Coastal Commission recommends 200 feet. The fire department recommends 200 feet. Our insurance policies require 200 feet. And the County of Ventura, the ordinance is for 100 feet. So we need to be moving on this thing. It could be this weekend the fires blow through there. And again, the time it's going to take for a fire in a 70, 80 mile an hour wind to blow through that chaparral to the coast will be measured in minutes, not in hours, not in days. Fortunately, over the last two fires that I've been involved with, they've been the good fires. The last one in 2013 blew through my property, but it wasn't being pushed by a wind, although I had gotten an 82 mile an hour wind the day before. In 93, the fires, we had plenty of time to respond and evacuate and whatever. But from Santa Rosa, we realized we're not always going to have time to evacuate. We're going to have to stay in place and survive by how well we've prepared ourselves.
Thank you, sir. Next item is the approval of the October 5, 2017 minutes. Do we have a discussion or a motion?
Move of approval?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Moving on to the major item of the day, PL 15-0187. The applicant Bentley Family Partnership, the appellant city of Ojai. We had received, just a moment, ma'am. We had received requests in the past that changed the way we took public comments. The matter was taken under consideration, and this is how I intend to go forward. We'll have the applicant speak, and then we'll have the appellant speak. And then we will have the speakers come up in the order that they were received as best they could at the clerk, by the clerk here. And if you have not turned in a speaker's card, please turn one in. There you go, ma'am. All right. "The applicant Bentley Family Partnership requests a modified CUP be granted to authorize the continued operation and maintenance of existing oil and gas wells, nine of them, within an existing oil and gas production facility for a period of 20 years. The appellant city of Ojai requests that the granting of the modified CUP and approval of an EIR addendum be delayed until an updated EIR fully analyzes the traffic impacts and the full-time use of a gas flare." Now, ma'am, go ahead. We'll have the staff report.
Good morning, Commission, Chair Onstott, Commissioners. My name is Christina Villarreal, and I'm a case planner with the planning division. So before I begin my presentation, I just want to do a little housekeeping items. This presentation is a co-presentation with the Air Pollution Control District. The Air Pollution Control District Officer, Mr. Mike Vegas, is here as well, and he's going to be chiming in at some points in the presentation. And there also is an error in the staff report. I believe it's on page 16. It's a reference to Saddle Lane and the distance from the existing flare. And the error is that that Saddle Lane is in the city, not in the unincorporated area. So the project site is located in the unincorporated area of Ventura County, in the Miramonte area. It is adjacent to Creek Road, and the Persimmon Hill neighborhood is also adjacent to the project site. So giving you a little land use and zoning designation information. The project site is predominantly zoned with open space uses and with varying minimum lot sizes. It has general plan designation of open space and also an area plan, the Ojai Valley Area Plan Designation of Open Space, 40 acres. Portions of the project site are located in the SRP, in the Scenic Resource Protection Overlay Zone. So that is located here. You can see where it says SRP. Surrounding areas of the project site include open space. And the existing flare, which is a point of contention for the appellants, is located approximately, well, it's located 2,337 feet from the nearest off-site residence, which is on Saddle Lane in the city of Ojai. The project site is adjacent to Sewell Park, and Highway 33 is about 7,880 feet west of the existing facility, so a little more than two miles. So this is just an aerial of the existing oil and gas production facility known as Bentley, Bentley Facility. And this is just a depiction of where the existing flare is and the distance from the off-site residence. This is the Persimmon Hill neighborhood, and where the tank farm is located and the existing wells on the site. For a topographical view, this is the nine wells that are proposed to continue operation as part of this CUP modification request. The small area in blue here is the original CUP boundary, CP 37. And the larger boundary is the CP 4159 boundary. So to give you some information about the well history on the site, oil and gas wells have been drilled on the site since 1861, and the drilling periods are from basically 1861 to 1983. There's 26 abandoned wells on the site and six idle and three currently active. So to get an idea of what the site looks like, we have some pictures. This is, the slide to the left of me is the, both the slides are existing, the existing Bailey Tank Farm. As you can see from the pictures, it is surrounded by existing vegetation and trees and a chain link fence. So it's not visible from public off-site views. This is a picture of, on the left, of the gas flare. It is this structure here. It's 20 feet in height, and the noise from the flare is only audible from 100 feet from the structure. And the only noise you would hear is the gas being incinerated. And here are just some pictures of the existing wells, the three active wells on the site. We have the Bailey 4 well to my right, the Bailey 9 well to my left, and the B and B 2 well to my right. So what is the project before you? The project before you is a continuation of the existing oil and gas facility for another 20 years, ending in 2037 should the permit be granted by your commission. There's no new wells. There's nine existing wells, and as I mentioned previously, it's three active wells and six idle wells. The only change in the project is the full-time use of the existing flare, and we're going to be getting into that in more depth in a minute. There's no vegetation removal, no expansion of the site. The current limitation on the project for tanker truck trips is unlimited, and the applicant is proposing two one-way trips per day. And that has been determined to be the historical limit or the historical high for the project. So they are asking for whatever the two one-way trips would be, which is the historical high for the site. There's no hydraulic fracturing or acid well stimulation as well. So just a little project history. In 1949, the board of supervisors granted CP 37, and that was exempt from CEQA. In 1984, the CP 4159 was submitted, and in 1986, in January, the county certified the EIR for the project. And the EIR evaluated 32 new well sites, 32 new wells on eight new drill sites. It's very important to note for the CUP that although the EIR was prepared for the project, it was never actually developed, but it was certified, the EIR was certified. In 2011, the planning director granted a consolidation of CP 37 and CP 4159 operations. And so with that consolidation, there was nine existing wells. So since 1986, actually, there's only been nine existing wells on the site that are active or idle. And in that determination, the director did a CEQA exemption. So for the current proposal, staff prepared an addendum to the 1986 Certified Environmental Impact Report. And this addendum addressed the pertinent issues of the project, basically what the continued operation of the facility is. And it's important to note that for all discretionary permits in local jurisdictions, including Ventura County, CEQA requires us to do, to analyze projects based on the baseline setting. So the baseline setting for this project is when it was submitted to the county, and that was in November 5 of 2015. So in determining what the environmental baseline is, it's what the existing physical setting on the ground is at the time the application is submitted, and then what the change is that is being proposed. So just a quick few notes on the environmental review. Staff evaluated visual resources and determined that there was no new impacts or no changes in the project due to visual resources. Biological resources, that there would be no, it would be less insignificant, and there would be no impacts to protected species such as the red-legged frog. Noise, that there would be no increase in the noise, and the only increase would be of the flare, as I mentioned earlier, which would be her off-site 100 feet from the structure. Traffic and circulation, as I mentioned before, the project currently has no limitation on truck trips, and the applicant is proposing to have two one-way trips per day. And that is during non-peak hours. And their haul route that was approved by the Public Works Agency in 1986 is still being used, and that is, the primary haul route is Creek Road to State Route 33, making a left at that intersection. And air quality impacts. Staff evaluated the air quality impacts from the full-time use of the flare and determined that it was in compliance with the general plan, the area plan, the Ojai Valley Area Plan, and the air quality assessment guidelines, which will discuss how we evaluated, how staff evaluated that when we go to those grounds of appeal. So this is just a summary slide of what the addendum had evaluated. No new impacts for biology, noise, traffic, and visual, and less insignificant for air quality. So the planning director granted the modified CUP on July 18 of this year, and the city of Ojai filed a timely appeal on July 28 of this year. So the appeal grounds for the city of Ojai are in four theme areas. These include traffic safety and circulation, safety impacts with the use of the full-time flare, air quality impacts from the use of the full-time flare, and inconsistency with the Ojai Valley Area Plan policies. So the appellant's grounds of appeal, for brevity of this presentation, the grounds of appeal are included in your staff report verbatim from what the city of Ojai has submitted. And I'm just going to be going over some points of summary for what those grounds of appeal are. So this table just includes the ground of appeal, the issue area, and what page you can find it in your staff report. So for the first ground of appeal is traffic safety and circulation. So the appellant contends that the designated truck route is dangerous and that the analysis doesn't take into account current conditions on the road. It only takes into account the 1986 statistics. There's no indication of how frequent the truck trips are. And since there's been an increase in the population for the last, since the last 20 years, and because there's been an increase in accidents, that was not taken into account when reviewing the project. And late-night trucking will alleviate any traffic safety impacts. So staff contends this ground of appeals without merit because, first, there's no change in the approved truck hauling route. There's no increase in truck traffic. As I mentioned before, there was no limitation in the current permit for truck trips, and now the applicant is proposing two one-way trips per day. And in the evaluation of the project, staff evaluated Caltrans traffic volumes on the state highway portions that are involved in the proposed project. And these are from 2015. And to note specifically for this project, the critical intersection is State Route 33 at Creek Road. And at that intersection in 2015, there is 21,380 average daily truck trips. Based on this volume of traffic, the proposed project at two one-way trips per day would only lead to .009% of the traffic volume at that intersection. Staff also evaluated the Caltrans accident reports from 2006 to 2016, specifically at the State Route 33 Creek Road intersection. And it's important to note that although there were 65 accidents during that 10-year period, 23 accidents were recorded in the 9 o'clock to 3:30 p.m. period, Monday through Saturday, and that's the peak hour timeframe for the Ojai Valley and their traffic impact area. And that is also the timeframe that the applicant is proposed to have their truck trips go on that intersection. So this, all this data actually leads to 2.3 accidents per year. And for the Bentley project, there has been no indication of tanker truck accidents at this intersection in that timeframe of 2006 to 2016. And it's also interesting to note that between, at that intersection, in the last 30 years, there have been between 6,200 and 9,400 tanker truck turns, left turns at that intersection, and no accident. So a change in the time of the trucking is unwarranted, specifically because it would result in new impacts on the road, such as lighting issues in the nearby neighborhoods. And it hasn't been analyzed, because the applicant has not proposed to have late-night trucking, only during the 9 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. timeframe. So this is just a map of the approved truck hauling route. The primary route, as I have mentioned, is Creek Road South to State Route 33. It's the solid line here. And the alternative route is Creek Road to Hermosa Street to State Route 33, and that is the dotted line here. And it's important to note as well that all of these routes are within the county area. So for a second ground of appeal is the full-time flare use. So the appellant contends that there's no cumulative analysis on the full-time flare use. There's no explanation of why it's needed on a full-time basis. There's no explanation of a flare prohibition, and the impact of the full-time flare has not been studied. Staff contends this ground of appeals without merit because, for several reasons, staff did analyze the full-time use of the existing flare and determined that it is consistent with the non-closess zoning ordinance, oil and gas development guidelines, which are required to be analyzed for all oil and gas projects in the county. And the applicant also prepared a pipeline feasibility analysis, I believe it's Exhibit 17 of her staff report. And with that, the applicant had to prepare analysis to, for staff to determine why a pipeline is not economically feasible and practical per the standards of the ordinance. So in 2015, the annual gross revenue from the project was $76,000. To install a pipeline is between $2.87 and $4.4 million. So right there, the applicant has determined, or the applicant has showed us that it's economically infeasible to connect to a pipeline based on the cost. And for logistics purposes, while the applicant was previously connected to a pipeline that was adjacent to Sewell Park, the applicant has not, has lost that connection. And in order to connect to another pipeline, the applicant would have to obtain easements and property rights to go onto other people's property to connect to that pipeline. But they don't have any easements to do that currently for the project. And actually, the nearest common carrier pipeline is five miles away, actually more than five miles away. And so there's no really easy connection to a common carrier pipeline. So going on with the theme of the full-time flare, the city of Ojai contends that safety and feasibility issues were not analyzed with the full-time flaring, and the full-time flare will have an increased fire risk. Staff contends this issue is without merit as the, all oil and gas facilities are subject to a current fire permit, and the applicant has provided the planning division with a current fire permit, so it's in compliance with the county fire protection district. The flare is located, as I mentioned, 2,337 feet from the nearest off-site residence on Saddle Lane. And the construction of the cylinder, it's actually, the flare is actually in a steel cylinder, and the flare is not visible. There's no open flame, so the flare is not visible from off-site. And the applicant, excuse me, the appellant has actually not given us the county any substantial evidence that the full-time flare would constitute a potentially significant impact. So in regards to GHG emissions, the appellant contends that there's no full-time analysis of the flare. There's no alternative methods or advances in technology analyzed, and there's no flaring of gas, and the flaring of gas would result in increased CO2 emissions. So at this point in the presentation, I will have Mike Vegas, Air Pollution Control District Officer, come and speak about those issues.
Chair Onstott, Commission members, good morning. Mike Vegas, Air Pollution Control Officer. On this slide, I'm going to just go over kind of that little basic equation there. And if you look at, kind of step back and look at the volume of gas burned in a region, say it's Ventura County or Southern California or California, it's basically a function of consumer gas demand, everything from, you know, making paper towels and toilet paper or Procter &amp; Gamble to heating the water in your house. And the volume of gas flared at either, you know, oil and gas production facilities or other types of operations. And that volume of gas flared is really a function or other types of operations, and that volume of gas flared is really a function of gas that isn't feasible to be put into a sales gas pipeline. So it's either economically infeasible or not practical. And then minus any gas that the operator could use on-site. And in this case, in Bentley, there are, uh, two buildings, and they are using a portion of the produced gas to heat water and operate a clothes dryer, I believe. Staff analyzed the, uh, greenhouse gas emissions, uh, looking mostly at, at CO2, and we came up with 865 metric tons annually. Uh, if you look at nitrous oxide, uh, which is a very, very small player i- in any greenhouse gas calculation, almost insignificant, it might bump that number up by, you know, half a metric ton a year. It's, so worst case, we're looking at 565.5, so it's, basically, that's well below 10,000, the recommended threshold from our district.
Thank you, Mr. Vegas. So for appeal grounds three and four, uh, these are combined, some combined, um, appeal grounds, and basically, it, it addresses the, um, the appellant's contention of the project being inconsistent with the Ojai Valley area plan and the general plan. So staff, uh, the appellant contends that any project that meets the area plan threshold of significance requires an EIR, and utilizing default APCD mitigation measures that render air quality impacts less than significant is actually a violation of CEQA. Um, there's no quantitative analysis of air quality impacts, and there's no way that the appellant can limit NOx emissions, nitrous oxide emissions, um, to five pounds per day, and there's no, um, analysis of how that can be enforced. In addition, um, the appellant contends that the failure to analyze current and past, um, past emissions history was not included, and there, uh, the stat, the county is relying on and deferring analysis of air quality impacts by use of countywide mitigation measures through implementation of the air quality assessment guidelines. That ignores geographic, uh, geographic and topographic realities of the Ojai Valley, and failure to analyze anticipated natural gas amounts from the wells will lead to unknown and increased emissions, and the county did not follow strict interpretation of the area plan air quality, uh, policies. So staff contends these grounds of appeal are without merit, um, because, as I mentioned before, is the CEQA baseline. The baseline is what, what the existing physical setting is when this application is submitted and the change that the applicant is proposing. So for this project, the Bentley project, the CEQA baseline is operation of the nine wells and the two one-way trips, um, per day. The project change is the full-time use of the flare. So in evaluating this, um, the, the county did, in pursuant to CEQA, permit, uh, for, analyze the permitted future operations, not the past operations. So as your commission may remember, um, back in 2016, um, I, staff came to your commission, um, regarding two appeals of oil and gas projects in the Ojai Valley. These were the Marada projects, and, uh, staff through NAPCD gave a in-depth presentation regarding how the county and APCD, uh, reviews and analyzes projects, uh, with regards to the, to the county, um, adopted guidelines, uh, which would be the area plan, the general plan, and the air quality assessment guidelines. So for a little refresher on that and to, um, give more information to Commissioner White, I'm just gonna go over those again. Uh, so the, the Ojai Valley area plan, since the project is in the area plan, states that the, that there's a five pounds per day threshold of significance for NOx and ROCs, nitrous oxide and reactive organic compounds emissions. The general plan states that, that the air quality impacts must be assessed by the adopted air quality assessment guidelines. Those guidelines state that any, um, permitted, APCD permitted facilities, um, that include emissions from equipment and operations requiring those permits are not counted towards the threshold, air quality threshold. And it's also important to note that, um, based on those two projects that were appealed to the board of supervisors in, uh, June and November of 2016, the board of supervisors made findings that relied upon the general plan, um, policy regarding provisions of the, their AQAGs, the air quality assessment guidelines. And as I mentioned before, that means that, um, APCD permitted facilities, the emissions from those, um, the equipment and, basically, the equipment from those, um, do not count towards the threshold. So this means that air, that oil wells and flares permitted in Ventura, permitted by Ventura County Air Pollution Control District, such as the, the current, such as the Bentley facility, are not subject to the five pounds per day threshold. So specifically for the Bentley site, uh, the flare emissions would be limited to less than five pounds per day. That would be monitored by a flow meter that was installed by the applicant, um, this past week, and that would facilitate monitoring of the flare emissions. The APCD, um, has, requires annual permits for their APCD permitted facilities, and the capacity noted on the permit for the flare is three pounds per day. So again, we're gonna have Mike Vegas come up and talk about how, um, the APCD evaluates air quality emissions through their, um, air quality program, and, um, how they came up with the, um, current, well, the decided 10,000 metric tons threshold.
Just to let you know, the other air districts in California that have adopted or made a recommendation on a CEQA threshold for greenhouse gas emissions related to a stationary source, uh, subject to a CEQA analysis, have all, to date, set them at a level of 10,000 metric tons per year. And the interesting thing, when you look at this, when you look at our neighboring district, this is exactly what the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District adopted, and this is also consistent with the interim, uh, guidance from the South Coast Air Quality Management District. Uh, we are aware that, yes, the county of Santa Barbara Planning Department has set a lower limit, but like I said before, the vast majority of districts in California have not taken a position on this, and all of the districts that have taken a position have gone with 10,000 metric tons. And just to put that in perspective, when you look at California's programs under AB32 to deal with climate change, mandatory reporting, so the facilities that the California Air Resources Board is, is looking at to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from, that cutoff is 25,000 metric tons per year. Uh, the other item I wanna mention to you is, we looked at basically a health risk representation for this facility, and we based it on the well-developed and very effective program the districts operate, knowing, known as the Air Toxics Hot Spots Program. And what we did is, we ran what's called a health risk prioritization procedure, and this procedure has been updated to meet the new standards that were put out by the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, looking at childhood exposure and multipathway pollutants on the cancer side. So basically, how it works under Air Toxics Hot Spots is, we run a prioritization. The prioritization basically is a very, very conservative look at numerous modeling runs, and basically what it says is, if you don't come up with a prioritization score of 10 or more, you do not move forward with a health risk assessment, which is a more detailed look, including modeling, et cetera, and a more detailed look at weather conditions, dispersion, those type of things. Basically, what prioritization does is it gives you a very conservative number, more conservative than the health risk assessment would provide, except in the case where the receptor was basically right next to the facility. And that's certainly not the case with the Bentley, uh, situation, we're over 2,000 feet, even if you look at the closest piece of operating equipment, which is, the tank's a little closer than the flare was. So when we ran the numbers, we came up with a priority score of less than one, and that actually goes into the low category. We looked at cancer, we looked at non-cancer, both acute and chronic, and the highest score we could come up with was for cancer. And if, the low threshold is one, and the high threshold is 10, to put it in perspective, we came up with point oh eight. We also ran this conservatively, assuming all nine wells were operating, and we only have three operating at this time. With that, uh, I'll be happy to take any questions on that, as, once we get through
Thank you, Mr. Vegas. So, uh, for the planning commission hearing today, uh, staff mailed notices to, um, the city of Ojai, uh, property owners with three hu, within 300 feet and, um, 16 parcels pursuant to the non-coastal zoning ordinance and to interested parties. Electronic notification was also sent to the outside agencies, such as U.S. Fish and Wildlife and DOGAR, the Division of Oil, Gas, Oil and Gas and Geothermic Resources, which is the state agency that oversees oil and gas permits in California, and, um, a legal advertisement in the county star. So recommended actions, I won't read them for brevity, um, but they're on the screen for you. So before I conclude the presentation, I just wanna note that we received some late items, um, from the public. So we received some public comments, and, uh, we received about 81, um, 81, uh, notations that they were in support of the project, and six, um, letters saying that they were not, they were not in support of the project. Now, your commission received some of those letters, um, yesterday through Exhibit 40, um, and, but we also received several other ones, and the ones in favor of the project were verbatim, um, in support of the project, uh, from the previous, from Exhibit 40 that you have. We also received a late response last night at 10:30 PM from the Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas, and staff prepared, uh, a quick memo for, uh, your review. And just briefly go over that memo, um, staff reviewed the memo, um, you know, in our, the staff's crucial review of the project, of the memo, um, all of the items have been addressed previously, and if you have any questions about it, staff can, um, address those. So if you have any questions, um, Mr. Vegas and, and staff are here to answer them.
Any questions of staff at this point?
Uh, yeah, at some point, I would like to discuss air quality and greenhouse gas emissions. I don't know if right now's the best time to do that, but...
You might wanna wait to...
Yeah, I think probably we wait, but I would like to do that at some point.
Okay. Go ahead.
Christine, I have one question.
Yes.
When you were talking about, um, truck accidents, were you referring to, in general, there have not been any truck-related accidents in the last 30 years, or just specifically to the truck drivers for Bentley?
Uh, Chair Onstott, Commissioner Kessley, the Caltrans' records, um, provide, um, information about whether it's a tanker truck or, or not, or a regular vehicle. So it would be, in, in general, the tanker trucks, there would be no accidents.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to add, um, in my presentation, I may have mentioned that it was during peak hours that the trucks would be, um, going on the highway. It's actually non-peak hours.
Thank you very much.
Nora, go ahead.
Um, thank you for getting through so much information and such a, I mean, that was, that was really quick. Could you go back to your slide, where you, um, go back to 1986 and the EIR that was certified but not built? And I just wanna ask for, for some clarification.
Okay. Is this the slide?
Yeah. Um, so the nine existing wells, were they part of the, uh, EIR? Were they part of this CEQA analysis in, in 86?
Chair Onstott, Commissioner Duquesne, yes.
We have nine wells approved, six idled, is that correct? Idled but not abandoned?
Chair Onstott, yes. Six idle, three, nine, nine total, six idle currently, and three active.
Does the fact that these wells are idle but not abandoned enter into our discussion today? I understand if they're going to be abandoned, that would be ordered by DOGAR, and they would supervise it, but the fact that they haven't been abandoned, does that in any way influence what's happening today?
Uh, Chair Onstott, um, the other wells can be, uh, abandoned at any time, but they are part, they are currently active, and the applicant is requesting that they be active. That would be a separate, um, action that you're, that would require a modification to the permit.
Thank you. Anything further? Go ahead, Megan.
Just to follow up, just so I'm clear, I'm, I'm, from what I read, I am assuming that everything has been calculated as if all nine wells were active right now, correct? All the...
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. At this point, we'll call for disclosures from commissioners.
Yes, I have a disclosure. I did tour the site yesterday, uh, with the applicant's representatives.
Nora?
I have no disclosures.
I have no disclosures. Megan?
I have no disclosures.
Okay. Okay, the applicant, please, your presentation. Your name and address, sir?
Good morning, Chair Onstott and fellow commissioners. My name's Neil McGuire. I'm the representative of the applicant. I'm from the law firm of Ferguson, Case or Patterson at 1050 South Kimball Road here in Ventura. So I'd like to briefly elaborate on some of the points that were already covered by county staff, primarily focusing on the two areas that, uh, have been raised by the city of Ojai in their appeal. Obviously, that's the air quality and, and the, uh, traffic safety issues. I did want to note that we have other members of our project team, Cliff Simonsen, uh, on behalf of the operator, as well as Jane Farkas of Sespe Consulting, and some others to answer questions that you may have, uh, and I do plan on relying on them heavily if we have questions here...
Will they be making presentations or merely available for questions?
Cliff will speak right after me, and then the others will be available for questions.
Thank you, sir.
So if I could start with the, the air quality emissions issues, um, we've covered a few of them, greenhouse gases. I wanna focus first on, uh, the emissions issues that arise from, uh, this discussion about what are the standards that are applicable to this project and will we satisfy them? And I expect that you'll hear some comments from the city of Ojai, as well as, uh, members of the public about the Ojai Valley area plan. Uh, and if you recall, the Ojai Valley area plan, uh, sets a standard for cumulative impacts of, it's the five pounds per day, uh, for two of the criteria pollutants referred to, uh, as NOx and, and ROC. Um, we also have standards that are set through the APCD and the permit to operate that's applicable to, uh, the flare as well as, uh, the wells. And so, again, there's been this discussion, this back and forth about, are, are we subject to that, are we not subject to that? I just wanna make it clear that we have voluntarily made ourselves subject to both of those standards, all of those standards, and we will comply with whatever the lower standard is. So for example, if the lower standard is the five pounds per day, uh, which may be the case for the ROC, we will comply with that.
I'm sorry, may I interrupt?
Yes.
By the lower standard, um, there's...
The more restrictive.
That's what I was gonna ask you.
Thank you for the clarification. Um, so it will be the more restrictive, uh, condition, because on the NOx side, uh, there's a, a very good chance that moving forward, uh, in existing, that, uh, the NOx standard will actually be lower than the five pounds per day. Uh, right now, it's roughly around three, is what's, uh, projected. And so, again, just to clarify, we're taking this belt and suspenders approach of saying, but we can put all that aside because we're going to satisfy, uh, the most restrictive, uh, requirements. And how are we gonna do that? There's comments that you're gonna see, uh, including in the comment letter last night about, well, how do you monitor that? How's that going to be enforced? Uh, we've agreed, and, and as was mentioned, we've actually already gone out and done this, uh, but we've... we've installed a permanent meter on the flare so that that can be read on a regular basis to ensure that we are complying with those most restrictive standards. And then to touch on the question that Chair Onstot, that you just raised with regard to the idle versus abandoned wells, we recognize that there is a chance that, a very good chance, that because of the air quality emissions limitations, that may be the tail that wags the dog on the operations side of things. We do want to maintain the ability to reactivate the idle wells if necessary, but there's a very good chance, it's unlikely that all of the wells could operate simultaneously or even a majority of the wells could operate concurrently because of the air quality emissions restrictions that we've subjected ourselves to. So I also wanted to just briefly touch upon the need for the flaring. As was mentioned, there was a pipeline that was in place historically that was ended. We did conduct an analysis, it is in Exhibit 17 of your materials, that went through half a dozen options of what could we do besides flaring the gas? And that's required to show under the non-coastal zoning ordinance. I just wanted to elaborate on one point that was mentioned with regard to the pipelines. There were actually two pipeline alternatives that were looked at. One was constructing an entirely new pipeline. That's the one where we looked at the economic feasibility of doing that and determined that it was economically infeasible to construct an entirely new pipeline to get over to SoCal Gas, which is approximately five miles away, I think a little bit more than that. There was another alternative that was referenced and discussed in that, which was, could we connect to the existing offsite pipeline that was used historically? It's owned by a third party, not us. At one point in time, we did have access rights to utilize that pipeline. We no longer have those access rights. They have expired. And so, for that reason, there's a practical infeasibility as to why that is not an alternative at this time. We would obviously love for that to change in the future. The applicant is incentivized to make productive use of that gas. As you heard, we do do that on the property to the extent that we can now with regard to the two homes. But at this point in time, that third-party entity is not willing to make that pipeline available to us. That may change, and again, we'd be happy to, you know, to see that change in the future and either reduce or eliminate the need for the flaring. With regard to the truck safety, if I could briefly touch on that, I think the most important point with regard to the truck safety is one that's been mentioned but bears repeating. Because of the context that we find ourselves in from the Sequa side, again, we have an existing project. There was an EIR that was prepared for that project. We are now looking basically for an extension, obviously with the modification for the flare. Sequa tells us in those circumstances that we don't have to start from scratch when we're doing that. And so what you have to look at typically are, you know, have there been changes in the project? So the flaring, that's a change in the project from what was analyzed in the past. Again, the truck route, the truck safety issues, nothing's changing there. That's the status quo. We're proposing to use the same truck route. We're proposing to, the truck routes are driven by the operational side of things, the nine wells, and that's something that is also going to be maintaining the status quo on that side of the aisle as well. So I think it's important just to keep that in mind, that the issues have been raised, but from that side, it is a reflection of the status quo. So I wanted to also mention that the safety issue that the city has raised with regard to the left turns at Highway 33, obviously that issue only impacts half of the trips, right? It's the trucks that are departing the ranch that are subject to that issue, not the trucks that are headed towards the ranch that would be an issue there. Obviously, county staff did a fantastic job of looking at accident data, looking at ambient traffic levels. I think the slides mentioned that the ADTs for the existing conditions, the staff report mentioned that that's actually lower than what was in place in 1986. So we'll hear about maybe population increases in Ojai and along the area that utilizes Highway 33, but from the staff report level, the ambient truck trips, or excuse me, the ambient traffic levels have actually decreased over time. So there really isn't a reason to reopen that can of worms. And in fact, Sequa tells us not to do so unless there's a change in the project or the circumstances surrounding it that would warrant doing so. And again, with the truck trips, we just don't have that. One question, one minor point as well, since it's been raised with abandonment in the nine existing wells. We've heard comments in the past about wanting to see essentially an abandonment plan for those idle wells. We are asking for those to be maintained. We did want to note that, at least on paper, the applicant is giving up the right to drill additional wells. I mean, you saw in 1986 that there was an analysis done of up to 32 additional wells to be drilled there. So on paper at least, we are, you know, abandoning those options. We'd like to stay with the status quo and proceed from there. So thank you for your time and consideration, and with that, I'll turn it over to Cliff Simonsen.
I have a question. Who monitors the gas meter?
So APCD monitors, but we also can take readings ourselves and report those to APCD.
You have an independent agency monitoring the meter?
I believe it is a third-party entity.
Thank you.
Mr. Simonsen can clarify for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Phil?
It's a little cooler today, which is nice, and maybe we'll have a little cooler, heads will prevail and we can work through all of our disagreements and differences. Commissioner, Commissioner Onstot, and planning commissioners, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like, I'm looking forward to answering any of your questions. I'd also like to thank staff for their presentation and their hard work.
Cliff, excuse me, could you, full name and address?
Yeah, sure, sure. Cliff Simonsen. I live, my office is in Ventura, and I live in Camarillo. I thought everybody knew me. So a little background on me, now that we're going there. I'm an Ojai native. I was, lived in Ojai for over 20 years. I went to Nordoff, I went to Matilaha, I went to Marmoni. The, I'm a graduate from class of 76. And the, I lived on the ranch for almost 10 years and the, I'm, I feel, I'm feeling as an Ojai resident even though I live across town. My daughter went to Thatcher School, and for better or worse, she's now going to be a law student in Boston. I've been involved in this ranch for 35 years. I've been the manager of it for approximately 30 years. So I suppose everything, at the end of the day, everything is my responsibility and my fault, so you can point at me and ask me questions. The, I am and the Bentley family are involved in the community. We're involved in many different endeavors, and so we're just not somebody that's coming from out of town or what have you and taking fancy to the property. We, I believe we've been excellent stewards, but we're also excellent members, I believe, of the community. We're involved, I have a cancer foundation that is one of the larger supporters of the VCMC for their indigent cancer patients. Soder Point, which is down here in Marina Park, is one of our endeavors. And the, and we are, have about 700 employees within Ventura County doing all kinds of different things. So we are a big part of, a big part of what's going on here in Ventura and in Ojai. The ranch, it's a very unique property, and I feel it's an honor and a duty to be a steward of that property. It's a very important asset to not just, you know, the Bentley family, but to the community as well. It's a mixed-use property. We have, we do a variety of things here, the oil and gas is part of it. It's been in constant production since my coming aboard in the 1980s. I think we've been very careful to make sure that we don't have any fines, violations, or any permit issues or what have you. We're getting a lot of scrutiny here, so hopefully we've exhausted almost all of the, and been responsive to everybody's inquiries. I believe in openness. I believe in making sure that everybody knows what we're doing. Thank you, Commissioner White, for your visit yesterday. I appreciate it. I hopefully, hopefully it was helpful. But we also have agriculture, Thatcher School, pastors, there are horses there, and they have for, since I've been involved for over, probably over 50 years, it's been a part of Thatcher School horse program. And of course, we preserve open space. And all of these, and one other component is that it's a communication lifeline for Ojai because of the cell sites that are present on the property. The ranch itself is about 980 acres. The oil and gas part of it is about five acres. It's a small footprint inside a larger, mostly open space agricultural use area. The Bentley family purchased it in the 1980s. The father was a point on that, the father passed in 86, and the sons and now the family, hence Bentley Family Limited Partnership are the ones that are involved in the property. The, we've complied with all DOG requirements, and Ewan from the DOG is here, I know, and he can answer any questions and confirm anything that I might, I might suggest. We complied with the APCD control district requirements. There is no fracking on the property, and there is, it's prohibited. No wastewater injection on the property. And we've continued to make improvements on the property, including making sure our trees are cared for, the open spaces cared for, habitat monitoring. We've had a really good relationship with all the, this is unlike a lot of, maybe, I'm not going to suggest anything, but we believe that we want to work with all the various agencies, including, for example, Army Corps, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, County of Ventura. We've done a cooperative errando eradication project with them and continue to do that. You know, these are our neighbors, even though they don't, aren't next to us, but they're involved in all the different aspects of managing a large property like this. The golf course, of course, Soul Park Golf Course is a neighbor, and we work cooperatively with them because we have a water well on the golf course that's ours. The golf course, the origin of part of this Soul Park Golf Course is actually was a donation made by the previous owner, Marguerite Anderson, to the County of Ventura. So the, we've done other things. We've constructed, at the urging of various agencies and for our own utility, we constructed a bridge across San Antonio Creek so we didn't have to continue to drive through the creek and impact habitat. The one red-legged frog that was of note during the biological monitoring of that bridge construction several years ago was made by us, and that led to a lot of discussion with U.S. Fish and Wildlife about red-legged frog habitat sustainability. And we work with Watershed Protection District and others to, you know, to continue to maintain habitat for all of God's creatures. I think in summary, we've been good stewards of the land. The oil and gas, while it's, some people aren't a, have a different perspective about, you know, gas and oil, has been part of this property because it helps us sustain the property. It also is a necessary fuel for our livelihoods. California uses about 1.8 million barrels a day of oil. If we don't produce it, we have to import it. And the, I've been part of a longstanding, just so you know my bias, I've been, I'm third-generation oil person. I worked as a blue-collar worker in the oil fields, as was my dad, as was my grandfather. My brother's a patrol engineer, we won't hold that against him. And, but that's my prepared remarks. If you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Go ahead, Nora.
Good morning. I was wondering if you've had a chance to look at the late submittal from Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas. It's dated October 19th, and it has certain bullet points. Have you had a chance to look at that?
I heard about it. I have not had a chance to look at it, but I believe both staff, county staff, as well as our staff has had a chance to look at it and address.
Well, I would just like to ask for your response to some of the highlights that they have, that there was, they say it was an explosion, a crude oil tank exploded in 2008, and, which led to a fire, and it said that it was never reported. How would you respond to that?
You know, I was actually, showed up right after that. I remember it was really important because it's, first, I know my wife had just passed away, so I, it was just shortly thereafter, so I was up on location. Yeah, right after that. The, it was reported, of course. The fire department was there, and they understood what happened, and they, or they reacted to what happened.
They're charging that the cause was not discovered or resolved?
The, our understanding is that it was a third-party contractor that had returned fluid to a tank during a well job and that caused an explosion.
Okay. And they also have concerns about.
No injuries, no spills. So I just want to make sure, no one was injured and there was no spill.
I just wanted your response to it.
Sure.
Because we get information from all sides, and I just want to make sure that everybody's got a chance to respond to what people have to say. The other thing that this letter says is they're concerned about the cosperd for plugging wells that are idle. And their concern is that this would be passed on somehow to the taxpayer. And I said, I sense that they want assurances from, from the operator that, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Wells will be properly abandoned?
That's an excellent question, and there's a couple of layers to this as compared to some of the other applicants or producers that have come through here. This is not a leased property, it's owned in fee. Therefore, the property is, the people that own the property own the wells, which is different. So that adds, the property itself is one of the guarantees of the abandonment.
Guaranteeors?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Guaranteeors?
Guaranteeors, yes, thank you. The, Neil has a comment. Apparently Neil, okay, Neil's a lawyer.
So if I could just add to that briefly, the idle wells are also subject to a program with DOG that also has a financial guarantee component to that as well. So I just wanted to note that element.
Thank you.
All right.
You can stay right there. You don't have to like walk away.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. Any other further questions?
Not at this time.
Any other commissioners?
Not at this time.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else speaking for the applicant? Call on the appellant, please. Name and address, sir.
Good morning, Chair Onstot, members of the commission. My name is Steve McClary. I'm the city manager for the city of Ojai. My office is located at 401 South Ventura Street. I also wanted to take a moment to thank everyone for their indulgence and also appreciate the professionalism of the county staff in working with us on this matter. I believe we have a PowerPoint presentation, and I'll see if I can figure out how to make this work. I'll try not to spend too much time. I know this can be a bit of a dry topic.
Excuse me, sir. By the way, we will have, the applicant will have a chance to rebut, as will you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So again, the main grounds for our appeal, our main concern is that the ERA, EIR is outdated and that the addendum that was prepared for it is inadequate. We have concerns about potential traffic impacts, the change to allow the full-time use of what had been an emergency flare. We're concerned that no analysis has been done to show that the flare can be safely operated full-time in a high-fire danger area. Also concerns with greenhouse gases and health and safety issues from a full-time flare. And of course, I think, as you well know, any project that meets the threshold in Ojai Valley Area Plan for air quality impacts must be evaluated in either an EIR or a supplemental EIR. And our last main. And our, our last main concern is that the county has been inconsistent in its application of the County's general plan on this project. The EIR, as we stated, we feel is outdated and the addendum is inadequate. The original environmental impact report was prepared and dated in December of 1984. I understand that it was certified in 1986. But again, those studies were done almost 33 years ago. The addendum states that the circumstances in which the potential impacts to the environment were evaluated have not substantially changed since 1986. Also states that no new information of substantial importance was identified. However, several changes have occurred in the area since that time, including a large housing development nearby. Only minimal analysis has been included in the addendum and we feel that a more thorough analysis is necessary on all these points. Terms of potential traffic impacts, these truck routes were established in 1986, 31 years ago. The county has identified the primary route as Creek Road with a left turn on the Highway Talk a little bit about some of the statistics that we did find regarding accidents on that road. And then the secondary route, the county has identified Creek Road to Hermosa with a left turn on the Highway 150. I think for the City of Ojai, and I think for everybody here, I think that this is an opportunity for perhaps the county to consider looking at the secondary route as perhaps being a primary route, as just being perhaps overall better safety location. I'm not a traffic engineer. However, I've been driving that intersection and making that left turn for almost nine years now. It is very difficult even for somebody who is paying strict attention, driving a four-car, four-door sedan. The dynamics of the road in terms of the curvature, it is very difficult to be able to see a vehicle that is speeding in the number one lane when it is obscured by a truck or other traffic in the number two lane. So by the time you think you've safely, had the opportunity to safely commit to that left turn, you may suddenly find a vehicle bearing down on you very quickly in the number one lane that you were not able to see coming up. So again, I think there's an opportunity here, just to, almost as a common sense approach, take a look at either using Hermosa or Country Club as a better location where these trucks can safely get out. I also just want to note that we were rather pinned in going in and out of the Ojai Valley. So while there are some routes around, if there is a major interest, a major accident that occurs right there at Creek Road and 33, that severely impacts the ability of folks to get into and out of the valley. The staff response, the county staff response focused on the statistics from the project, noting that there's only two additional trips per day proposed. County staff reports that the project proposes six truckloads in one week and 22 in one month, which is considered a negligible impact compared to the current volume on Creek Road. However, the staff report does not address the notoriously poor visibility, which I just alluded to, and the high speed of traffic at the intersection of Creek Road and Highway 33, which is challenging for anybody to try and get out. According to the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, we did a little homework of our own, there had been 13 major injury accidents reported on Creek Road along the route since January 1st. Again, we're not talking just at the intersection at 33, but we're talking along that route. This is a view. If you were coming, you've made your trip down Creek Road and you're now attempting that left-hand turn, this is looking a bit to the north. This would be another view from that direction. As you can see, it's pretty difficult to see. This is the view of the secondary route at Hermosa. It's still challenging, however, there is better visibility at this location, in our However, the secondary route also requires a left turn across traffic with no signal, the same issue that there is with Creek Road. I think everybody is pretty familiar with some of the issues that we've had there. Again, the staff report notes that accidents involving trucks have not occurred, but it fails to mention the many other significant and serious intersection, accidents that have occurred at this intersection. Moving on to the discussion about the use of the emergency flare as a full-time flare. It's interesting because the original CUP required a pipeline, which I understood in the staff report, was in use until 2003. And I'm a little unclear as to why that is no longer available. However, we're being told that it's economically unfeasible to do so. I'm not sure how that is a reason to circumvent CEQA on the county's own CUP. Economic feasibility is often based on market conditions. If you're a shale oil producer in North Dakota, you'll probably be mothballing your rigs until the price of oil reaches the point where it becomes economically feasible to operate If you take away the requirement and allow them to use the flare, they're really, you're taking away any incentive to try to find that solution. It seems that there are options here, but they're, they're just been identified as being too costly. It's also interesting on this flare that now we're told that there is a meter that has been installed. I'm curious, there's a condition that's going to be requiring that it be maintained and that the emissions be reported to the APCD and that that be done by a third party. So again, the CUP allows an emergency flare to be used full-time in lieu of the previously required pipeline. Rationale requires on a past EIR and its addendum. The staff report focuses on staff's evaluation that is no longer feasible to use the pipeline if the cost of the pipeline is prohibitive, not on analysis of the flare for health, safety or environmental impacts, which are not fully reviewed. Analysis relies on assumptions that we believe are false and haven't been thoroughly investigated. Given that no new impacts would be result from the continued truck transport of produced fluid, it is not physically and economically feasible and practical to require construction of a pipeline. Staff's response essentially that although the new CUP doesn't comply with the 1984 requirements to use pipelines, the CUP can now, the CUP can now use trucks in an emergency flare because it would be too expensive to comply with the original requirements. We feel a full analysis must be done. If you want to note that this is not a photo of the site, so I don't want any misconceptions there. But again, no analysis has been done to show that the flare can be safely operated full-time in a high fire danger area. Report responds that evidence has not been provided by the city showing that use of the emergency flare on a full-time basis will result in potentially, in a potentially significant fire safety hazard. But the report does not include any statistics or information on the safety of operating emergency flares full-time. There's also no provision that we see included for if the anniction pilot goes out. Continuing on with some of the additional health and safety concerns, report does not include any analysis of alternative technologies that have arisen since 1984. It's not analyzed whether a new full-time flare should be built prior to full-time usage. Use of the emergency flare for a full-time flare was originally prohibited and has not been fully analyzed. The flare is based on unsubstantiated cost analysis. We acknowledge that a health risk prioritization assessment was done, however, it was done in response to the concerns raised by the city. And we have concerns that the project was not fully vetted prior to the issuance of the CUP, since the assessment was not done until after the appeal was filed. Any project that meets the Ojai Valley Area Plan thresholds must be evaluated in an EIR or supplemental EIR. We've heard quite a bit of detail and discussion on this. But we simply, bottom line, we do not feel it sufficient to state the project will be subject to inspections to determine if it's exceeding this limit. And we believe that the emissions could and should be analyzed and confirmed prior to issuance of the CUP. As we stated, we're, feel that it's an inconsistent application of the County General Plan here. We're relying on unanalyzed county-wide APCD mitigation measures without any analysis of the specific proposed mitigation measures or an explanation as to how those mitigation measures would ameliate air quality in the Ojai Valley. We request that careful quantitative analysis of the issues raised in this appeal be given In conclusion, we have raised several significant concerns related to the project. We've talked about the concern with the proposed routes. Again, I think this is an opportunity for you to take a look at some alternatives and see if you can make this better. Somehow we've turned an emergency flare into a full-time flare, even though it appears that there may be some other alternatives to using it that way. We also have concerns about the analysis done for the environmental and health effects from that. Again, the project has not been fully analyzed. The IR is, EIR is over 30 years old and we feel that the addendum has not been sufficient. And we, as we've stated, we've seen some recent analysis as a result of the concerns that the city has raised and we feel that those should have been done prior to issuing of the permit. Bottom lines, we feel more analysis is necessary before the project should be moving forward. Those are my remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of the appellant? None, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time we'll take the public comment cards. Is Mr. Vega going to speak for the-
No, I was, Mr. McClary spoke first.
William Warrick?
Did I pronounce that correct, Mr.?
Pretty close. Warrick, not spelled properly. My ancestors didn't, didn't have, when they got off the boat, they kind of messed it up.
Your name and address, sir.
I'm 107 East Aliso, City of Ojai. A member of the city council, I'm speaking as an individual councilperson. I want to speak to two small issues. First, the easy one to dispose of. I was thrilled to hear about the monitoring agreed to and hope and implore the commission to make sure that that monitoring of the flare with respect to the Ojai Area Plan standards that were voluntarily stipulated is enshrined very carefully in a condition of approval so that years from now, people will know very clearly. So I was thrilled to hear that and I just hope the conditions of approval are very, very specific about that. And again, I think Chair Onstot, your comment about third-party verification is extremely important in that respect. I want to speak about the route for hauling. I speak to a lot of people in my role as a city councilperson with a whole range of opinion about this particular project. And I wish I was a videographer because I'm going to speak just to common sense and all the bureau, you know, all the protocol and procedures and all that kind of issue. And even the most ardent supporter of this project, when I say, yes, they want to make a left turn on Creek Road, I wish I was a videographer to capture the entire range of incredulity that ensues, both verbally and facially. And the reason is that you have three routes of travel and I'm just speaking to common sense here and not procedures and protocol and whether the conditions have changed, just common sense. Because the entire range of opinion about the project in general, for anybody that lives and works in the Ojai Valley knows that this left turn is the most problematical, worrisome, dangerous, awkward left turn there is to make in the entire valley. And I would urge any of you commissioners that know anyone in the Ojai Valley to ask them that personally. You have three alternatives for route hauling. One is the steepest grade for initiating the move to the left turn in terms of a steep incline to the, the worst sightlines, the highest traffic, average traffic speed in the cross-traffic, the reconfiguration by Caltrans into a multi-lane aspect, and most compromised in terms of sightlines. That's the primary hauling route. The secondary hauling route, it also no, no controlled, no controlled intersection, no stoplight. The secondary, the next step down in terms of cross-traffic speed, little improved sightlines, but still compromised. And then you have a primary haul route possibility, which I know that the majority of city council has spoken publicly in, in session saying, you know, why not? Where you get off Creek Road as soon as possible, after you make the left turn on the creek, out of the Bentley Oilfield, take the ride on Country Club, come to a relatively flat, least inclined stop, at a stop light, a controlled intersection, and get onto Highway 150 as soon as possible and proceed out of the valley.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. Can we get that aerial map up and have him show us what he's talking about, literally?
It's not on the map that was presented.
Any of the-
It is. It's outside the map.
I don't know whether it is or it isn't.
There's a truck route map.
It's not on that map. It's on the up, it's up, you see where the project side is and then you see there's a road-
Right.
-going straight up to Highway 150 that goes off the map, that goes to a traffic light where trucks could make the left turn in a controlled intersection, getting on the state highway, Highway 150 as soon as possible, and then it merges with Highway 33 down the line.
Where does it come into 150?
The Country Club intersects with Highway 150, just right at where the Ojai Valley Inn is.
Okay.
Near the, right where the Ojai Valley Inn is.
Matilla High Junior High.
Matilla High Junior High.
And so, but, okay, then we'll have issue with trucks going through town.
I can tell you that the majority of city council in open session has says, has already stated, why not? We are concerned with the safety of our citizens leaving and coming in and out of the valley more than trying to say, oh, don't be in our city. The safety, the characteristics of the three intersections are clear. Which one is the safest to make that left turn? The one with the traffic light? The one that gets you on the state highway is the soonest? And the one that has the least incline for accelerating into the left turn? This has nothing to do with saying whether or not the product should get to market, it's just saying, please, let's use some common sense here. And I, you know, just, I'm, I'm, most people I've talked to across the entire range of opinion of whether or not they are for or against the extension are going, you know, why not? Why is this even a matter of debate? When we have a signaled intersection for the left turn as opposed to the most well-known, problematical, dangerous left turn in the valley? Anyway, that's my comment. Thank you.
Do any questions? I think we'll come back and revisit this discussion. Johnny Zuppan? I probably butchered that one, too. Did I get it right?
Yeah.
Oh, good. At first.
Hi, my name's Johnny Zuppan, 3985 Northland Street in Newbury Park. I've grew up in Ventura County all my life. After serving in the military, I came home to Ventura County because I love it here so much. Plus, there's great surf. I landed a job in the oil field. I got married, I had children, I raised my children here. I've read the Bentley signance and conditional use permit. And as a Ventura County resident, I see no concerns in the modifications. I support the local oil industry, which employs me and supports my family. I support the Bentley family and the minor modifications to the CUP. And I urge you to support this straightforward CUP extension. Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Just want to say thank you for your service.
We're going to be taking a break in five minutes, as I previously told you. Jean Orkut? Jean, are you here? No? Lynn Jensen? Oh, Jean, you are, I'm sorry. Hang on, Lynn. Had to wake you up back there. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Jean Orkut, Executive Director of the Coastal Energy Alliance. We're a group of local stakeholders that support the responsible use and production of local energy. I'm here today to express CEA's support of the Bentley Family Limited Partnership and support denying the appeal before you. We believe we need to support local producers that have a longstanding reputation of being good community partners and responsible stewards of the environment. We're asking that their request for this CUP extension with minor modifications be approved. It is, it is a straightforward permit that allows continued operations of nine wells with no new truck traffic. It should be noted that under the existing permit, Bentley has no restrictions on truck traffic, but still limited it to one truck load per day, and is continuing that commitment by voluntary, voluntarily limiting it to one load per day in the permit. Bentley has also requested that the use of the flare be added to the permit as it complies with the Ventura County APCD and the Ojai Area Plan standards. We need responsible and reliable energy resources, and for those reasons, we ask you to approve this permit. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Jean. Chris Collier? Oh, Lynn, I'm sorry. Didn't want to do that, did you?
Thank you, Commissioner Onstadt, Chair Onstadt and commissioners. I'm Lynn Jensen. I'm with the Ventura County Coalition of Labor, Agriculture, and Business, and we are an advocate for Ventura County businesses. We represent 450 members countywide. We believe that the Ventura County Planning Staff has thoroughly evaluated this oil and gas project with technical expertise, and they have recommended denial of the appeal based on the facts. In analyzing a project under SEQA, environmental impacts must be taken from the project baseline, which is the existing setting, and then those impacts must be significant. The appeal grounds are without merit because the minor changes to the CUP do not establish any new significant impacts to the environment. The only change in the CUP, as you know, is the necessary allowance to flare gas due to loss of access to a vintage pipeline. There is no other feasible alternative than flaring gas, which is necessary to safely operate the facility. The Ventura County Fire Protection District has evaluated full-time use of the flare and determined it would not contribute any new adverse effects related to fire safety. And then, the APCD evaluated the full-time operation of the flare and estimated that greenhouse gases will only be 865 metric tons per year with a threshold of 10,000, and even less than significant to the Santa Barbara County's new threshold of 1,000. And that means that it would not have significant impacts on climate change. In addition, they did a health risk prioritization study, which is a scientific study performed by APCD to evaluate the health effects, and found that the facility does not have the potential to pose a significant health risk. With respect to traffic, the applicant has added limitations on truck trips and peak hours, and with respect to the testimony by the city, a range of public opinion on an intersection is not really truly an analysis. Local oil production for Ventura County is really important to our economy, and every barrel of oil produced in Ventura County replaces a barrel that has been transported to California by tankers across our ocean. Sixty-six percent of our oil comes from there, mainly from the Middle East and South America. I've said that before. This is really important that we use our local oil resources. We commend the Ventura County Planning Division for their thorough analysis, and we recommend that the Planning Commission do die the appeal of the project and decline to refund the fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Any questions? Folks, it's about 10:50. We're back to speakers. Chris Collier? Chris, please give your full name and address.
Good morning. Chris Collier, 694 Spring Oak Road in Camarillo. And I'm here representing this morning the Western State Petroleum Association. Bob Poole couldn't make it, so I'm reading comments on his behalf. The Bentley Family Partnership is proposing a pretty straightforward CUP extension of their existing operations with just a minor modification, asking for the continued safe production of local energy resource with no new wells. Part of this minor modification includes the flares previously have been permitted by APCD and is in compliance with the Ojai Area Plan standards. Flare is necessary part of the permit due to removed access for the pipeline we've, you've heard about. Bentley secured the permit to use a flare from APCD is now asking that that be included in this permit from the county. The existing flare emissions are below the county level and the Ojai Area Plan limit. As a reminder, it's not the role of this body to make new rules for the APCD in terms of their standards, but to determine the proposed CUP extension complies with the existing rules, which it does. Regarding the trucking, Bentley has proposed no additional truck traffic and is actually instead voluntarily limiting truck trips to one per day. And as far as the idle wells, because that was brought up, just as a reminder, an idle well is still an active well. I know that there's someone here from the Department of Oil and Gas, and they could probably speak to the definitions a little bit more directly, but that is a definition of something that's still active and could be put back into use, and that's why it's important that it's part of the CUP. One more piece, the WISPA is requesting that you allow these modifications and extension and override the appeal that's being before you today. In California, we use almost 2 million barrels a day, and we only produce about a third of that. The rest of that comes from other parts of the world. We're an energy island. We don't receive, there's no pipeline from Texas that brings oil to us, so what we can do here in the most stringently regulated and safest place to produce oil in the world is better than putting on a tanker ship and shipping it in 30, 40 days across the ocean. One more note, I was born and raised in Ojai. I'm an Orloff grad, too. I've made that left turn more times than I can count, safely. So, thank you very much, and have a great day.
Any questions?
Good morning. I'm Chuck Barnett. I live at 250 Boardman Road, adjacent to Soul Park, so I've been a close neighbor to the subject property for 35 years. Have a direct view of the property and look at it every day, many times. In our neighborhood, we have Soul Park, which creates traffic and music, wedding music on the weekends, and a rant golf balls from the golf course. But these are all serving legitimate needs of the community, and we accept those. With the subject property, it's like they aren't even there. There are no impacts. I have no noise, I have no dust, I don't see any traffic. It's like they're not even there. But the open space has been preserved nicely, and they've just always been a good neighbor. I support local energy, as been mentioned here, and the environmental and economic benefits of the energy being produced locally. I know a good neighbor when I see one, and this is a good deal for our neighborhood, and I support the extension of their permit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
And I have some slides, if those can be brought up, please. Commissioners, staff, my name is Stephen Colome. I am here today to support the City of Ojai appeal. I'm going to say that I serve as a recently appointed member of the Ojai Valley for the, to the Advisory Committee of the Air Pollution Control District, but my comments today are my own and do not represent either the city or the APCD Advisory Committee. The first item that I'm putting up is, is one that was, I think, omitted from the, the planning documents. And so I want to talk a little bit about what it means to now be changing from an emergency flare. Now, an emergency flare is there for a purpose. It's to prevent damage from overpressurization of the gas systems, and it's to be rarely used. Very little gas goes through that. Right now, what the, is, is happening is literally all of the gas which is extracted in this well system is being sent to the, to the flare. And, you know, without worrying about thresholds or other issues, what that is, is a waste of a natural resource. It's taking a natural resource which has been extracted, saying that it's right now too cost ineffective to be removed and, and, and used. What I've, I, I'm not sure whether you all have in front of you a, the report that I prepared. I apologize for presenting that just today. I've been trying to get some feedback from the APCD, and I've been out of town on, on work and just got back late last night and still don't have some of the answers that I've posed to the, to the APCD. I address a number of technical issues, and I've put it together in a framework as though I were sitting in your position and asking questions that really are not addressed in the Planning Commission report, and from what I can see so far, not addressed in the APCD permits for this, this facility. Nine of the points relate to the design.
May I interrupt you?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that our representatives here have received your correspondence.
I, I presented it here at the desk this morning, so I don't know who is, who has received it.
No. Do you have more?
I, I have a few more, but only if, I have one more.
So.
Printed. I, I also gave an electronic copy of it to the clerk.
Okay. So can we make sure that our, our county experts have this? There we go. I'm sorry to interrupt, sir.
Sure. No, absolutely no problem. I, and as a former professor, you know, I speak normally in increments of an hour to three hours, so I have, I'm going to be abstracting and cutting this, cutting this down. I'm going to jump ahead to question number three, trying to emphasize what I think are some of the most important ones. Pilot lights on gas flares are subject to being extinguished by multiple causes, and it may be high winds, rain, cold weather, or variations in the heat value of the, of the fuel that's being injected into that. Very often, these are difficult, once that is extinct, the flame is extinguished, to reignite it. I do understand that there is both a gas, continuous gas pilot and an electronic ignition. Those are supposed to be tested monthly. In, I think it was the inspection in 2015, there was some question about whether monthly inspections were being actually conducted and what the results of those monthly inspections are. I think it's incumbent on you to get answers to, to that. The, the issue two would be if there is, and if the flare is extinguished, and this is now receiving all of the input gas, what would happen is raw gas, benzene, methane, and all the rest of that would be pouring out of the flare, uncombusted. So I don't know if there are alarms on that flare. I don't know if, if there are alarms, who is notified of the flare having been extinguished, or how long it would take them to get back to the site and, and reignite that, that flare. There doesn't seem to be any insight into that, either in the APCD documents that I've seen, or in, certainly not in the Planning Commission documents. I was also going to recommend that there be a flow meter, and I'm really glad to see that there is, but part of my recommendation was going to be that the CUP should have some minimum specifications, minimum technical specifications on those flow meters. So I don't know if it's a, an insertion mass flow meter that's been installed that looks something like one of these or something else. I don't know what the, and I don't see any CUP or APCD conditions on how the data logging is conducted, or who and how that data are made available. I mean, we're in the 21st century. Things could be put up on the cloud and even made available to the, the public that would be interested, potentially. I don't see this as proprietary information. There also is an opportunity here, and, and we'll see in terms of some of the inspection violations that have occurred in, in recent years, to do additional information, produce additional information. This is an infrared monitor that's designed for explosive conditions. It can be put at fence line and provide an additional warning if there is a failure of any part of the, of the system. These are used by the South Coast Air Quality Management District for fence line monitoring of air and gas, or in, in oil and gas productions. I'm going to, I'll jump to point number seven, that this is actually located in a complex terrain. It's got Sulfur Mountain on one side, Los Padres Forest on another. With that kind of terrain, there's upslope, downslope airflow patterns, and there's also up and down valley patterns. It's very possible for there to be stable meteorological conditions, and if there were a blowout of the, the flare, raw gases could end up wafting right into the Pürsümün Hill neighborhood. And I see, you know, no, no evidence that that wouldn't be the case. It's also interesting to me the way in which data are produced on point number eight. The permitted emissions of reactive organics by the APCD for this facility are reported as in tons per year, but also as 3.17 pounds per hour. 3.17 pounds per hour times 24 hours is a little over 75 pounds a day. So the potential impact of this facility as a single source is not inconsequential. And when, you know, if we talk about things that might be inconsequential, the cars that you and I drive, probably gasoline-powered or, or are hot water heaters, they're relatively inconsequential, much less than 75 pounds per day. But if we hadn't seen those as sources that we had an opportunity to control, there wouldn't be a blue-sky day in Ventura ever. We, we really have to be careful about not missing opportunities to reduce, do submissions. And I'll jump ahead to point B, which was in April of 2016, there was an inspection of the facility by the APCD inspector. There were five observations of leaks, fairly high concentrations of reactive organic gases, non-specified in terms of the type. One of them was 16,000 parts per million at a pressure valve that resulted in a notice of violation. Now, what's interesting about this is, I, I work in the pollution control industry, and my experience is that these inspections are timed, they're noticed. And usually, a facility will bring in their own outside consultants before the inspector comes in and tighten all of the valves and avoid these kinds of leaks. The, what we don't know is, we don't know the volume flow out of that, but we're right at the explosive limit for benzene and toluene, and just under it for methane. So a, a spark or a, a static charge could potentially have ignited the leak at, at 1600, 16,000 parts per million. There is a glycol dehydrator which has been, which is permitted for this facility. It's now been decommissioned, it's not being used. It would have been used had the gas been put into SoCal Gas Pipeline, because they would have taken out water vapor and made it commercially viable. The question here is, might this not be useful? The question here is, might this not be useful for processing anything that goes into the flare so that the flare characteristics are more uniform? And then there's this matter of the pipeline. There was a nice analysis done of the various ways in which a, the gas could be used and not flared. And what, there was relatively little discussion in Exhibit 17 of your packet of option number six, and I would like to know clearly what pipelines are near the facility, what pipelines might be used and negotiated by the applicant to end up being reactivated. They're there. My understanding is that several of them are permitted and active, so I'd say, you know, get negotiating. Finally, and somebody's got to explain to me, it's not in the planning report, why this CUP is being extended, or proposed to be extended, for 20 years? All of the facilities are in place? There is no major capex here? There are lots of unanswered questions. Why not extend this, if it's extended, for three to five years and come back and revisit? What will inevitably be available to us is additional controls available on oil and gas. And who knows? The applicant may be, oil might get back up to $150 a barrel and want to operate all nine, or extend the operation beyond that. So in summary, I have a different set of recommendations from the staff. I think that the conditions that the staff is proposing to remove should remain. That would be a very good incentive to the applicant to get busy with trying to find a way to process the gas in a pipeline. I think that the CUP should be limited to three to five years, unless there's a clear reason why it should be extended 20. I think that the, if the flare should be allowed for anything other than emergency conditions, that the insertion mass flow meter with conditions should be there, as well as some sort of fence line VOC measurements. Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to speak for longer than I thought I was going to be able to.
Well, we try to give urban opportunity. Any questions? Nora.
Could you give us your bona fides, please?
I have a PhD from Harvard University in air pollution control from the School of Public Health.
Thank you.
You'll have to excuse me, I'm a little nervous, and she told me to take a deep breath, so.
Take two.
Arlen Olson, I live on Creek Road, 11405 Creek Road. It's in between Hermoso and Encino. And I like to talk about the truck traffic. I don't know anything about air pollution, so I'll talk about traffic that goes by my place there. They talk about oil trucks, but what about the drilling trucks, the maintenance trucks, additional workers that go by? And they talk about two oil trucks a day. What happens if they get more oil? They going to dump it out over there, or they going to haul it on, add additional trucks to haul it? I don't know. What about bicycles? That's a very, a lot of people live along Creek Road, on those little offshoots of it, and they have a lot of families and young kids that ride bicycles on that road. Would you want your kid to ride a bicycle on that road, a big oil truck goes by? I don't think I would. And, oh man, I even ride it out there, and I get scared if I see big trucks, so. Now, we'll talk about horses. There's about five or six riding stables along Creek Road. There are signs up on each end of Creek Road that says, "Riding horses on the Creek Road, be careful." They have kids that ride on Creek Road, their horses, out there. Do any of you ride horses? No? 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 Well, what would you do if riding your horse out there along the road and a big oil truck came by? I'd be pretty scared, especially if the horse would be scared, and you don't know what happened to him. He could buck or whatever, and throw you off, so. And I want to talk about Creek Road where it ties into 33. I will not go down that road during the working hours in the morning or evening, because there's too much traffic and it's too dangerous. And a lot of people that live in Creek Road will not do that. So I, you know, that's about all I have to say, just that, hope you'll take consideration in people that ride horses there, people that ride bikes. There's eight or more riding stables, or five or more riding stables, plus a lot of ranches that have horses on, so that ride them. So, thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, Nora? Michael Haley?
Good morning. Michael Haley, 1577 Kennewa Street. I live along Creek Road, I'm a neighbor of Mr. Olson's, and I've come this morning because I want to support the City of Ojai's appeal. I agree with them, pretty much everything that they've been talking about, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of points myself, rather than try and just say, well, I agree with everything, but, which is that the thing that I'm the most concerned about is the flare, leaving the flare on all day. I mean, the air is not good up there, people. The air is not good. My wife and I moved down there two years ago, a little less than two years ago from Napa, and ever since we've been there, right now I have bronchitis. And, you know, I don't know, I'm not an expert on any of these things, so I don't really know all of the factors that could be in it, but I can tell you that the air is a lot worse there than it was in Napa. We, we went on vacation about a month ago to Upper Peninsula of Michigan along Lake Superior there, it was beautiful, and the air, you know, we got out of the car and we were like, oh my God, the air, we can breathe. And right at that moment is when I realized that the problem in Ojai is that the air's bad there. I don't know why, but, and exactly what it is, but I can tell you that the air quality is there is not good. And then, you know, I'm very concerned, I'm sitting here listening to all this and concerned that we're not following our own rules. You know, I support the oil industry, I don't have any problem with them having a well there, drove my car here today, hopefully I have enough gas left to drive home. I'm sure it's coming from one of the wells around here, so I'm not against them, but, you know, we have these rules, we have these health and safety rules, and we're not, it looks to me, from everything I'm hearing today, we're not following them. Why are we not following our rules? Why are we letting them burn a flare all day? Why did we just shine it on when they violated their previous permit? We're rewarding them for violating their permit by allowing them to do something that our own rules say don't do. So I don't get that, especially when the air up there is not good, to begin with. And in Napa, one time I was at a Planning Commission meeting in Napa, and they were talking about traffic, and one of the Planning Commissioners said, gee, you know, we've had 25 approved projects in a row that all said no significant traffic impacts, and now all we have are traffic jams, right? And this is what this reminds me of. No significant impacts, except how many of these are no significant impacts up there? Are we really looking at the cumulative impacts, is what I'm saying. Cumulatively, there's bad air up there. No significant impacts, but nobody can breathe. That's what I'm concerned about. So I think we need to stick to our rules. Let's follow our rules, and then I have no problem with it. I don't think that it's right to bail somebody out. It's not the county's job to bail someone out economically by bending the rules. That's not right. If I couldn't pay my mortgage, could I go to my bank and say, well, the county's going to pay my mortgage for me? I mean, that's the other thing I don't get. It's like, at some point, you have to say, maybe this is not economically viable, if it's breaking the rules that much. I think you got my point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Ann-Louise Ander? How do you pronounce your last name? How do you pronounce your last name, ma'am?
Underly.
Underly.
Good morning, planning staff, or Planning Committee. I'm Annalisa Underly, live at 245 Prittenwood Avenue in Ventura. I'm a retired civil servant, a registered petroleum engineer in the state of California. And I would like to make a few comments about the, the future of these leases that will be renewed for the next 20 years. This is not in the planning response, but I'm wondering if these nine wells will be re-drilled. That is, there's no plan to drill new wells, but it's almost equivalent to use the well bores of the idle wells and even the active for new wells going in different directions by using directional drilling techniques. The other thing is, there's nothing about well stimulation or well enhanced recovery, except that they're not going to frac the wells. And that's not really enhanced recovery, it's stimulation. They could very well steam flood some wells. It may not be practical, but it's possible. If you do cyclic steam or continuous steaming, that will mean the gas production will increase significantly, over the three pounds per day, I think it is. Anyway, that's just a consideration. I, if they're not going to do anything, that means the production will decline for the next 20 years, and that, that doesn't make sense, that it's low now, and if you want to make it economic, you either re-drill, or enhance, or do something to get more oil out of the ground. Now, as far as the gas production, the reporting stopped when the gas line outlet was discontinued in 19, or 2004, I believe it is. And in the, in the exhibits, exhibit seven, Exhibit 17 lists gas disposal analysis and crude pipeline analysis. And if you look at that, that's in the county documents, they indicate that the wells altogether make about, between 15 and 42,000 cubic feet a day of gas. Well, it also shows in this little attachment what the gas production looked like before it was stopped, and it was about, looking at it, about 100 MCF, or 1,000 cubic feet of gas a day, which, using a price of $2 in MCF, that's about $200 a day revenue. Even now, the revenue is, would be at $2, which is cheap, about $80. Here's something that might be, now, six alternatives in this attachment were considered, and I want to give you a seventh. This is, "The benefits of reinjecting instead of flaring produced gas in unconventional oil reservoirs." And I'll just read. "One possible solution is to reinject the produced gas back into the formation, which has numerous positive benefits. It has the potential to increase oil recovery from unconventional reservoirs because of the strong likelihood to achieve missibility." That means the gas will dissolve or go into the oil and make it less viscous with reservoir oil. Furthermore, unlike flaring, the injected gas will be available for sales once gas gathering pipelines become available. So you're saving all that gas. This gas has been wasted over the last 13 years. You know, it's just been burned. So, I can give you a copy. This is written by a number of people at the Colorado School of Mines, and it's a 2014 publication, and it really was stimulated by the terrible waste in the Bakken Formation where they're doing horizontal drilling and fracture treating to make a lot of oil. I think, state of North Dakota, North Dakota is now the second most productive state, only next to Texas, and California is third. The reason why is because of the Bakken Formation. Well, they're flaring all the gas, and you can see it by satellites, it just lights up the sky. Well, North Dakota apparently didn't have good conservation laws to allow that to happen. And, well, what I'm saying with this is, you could run your compressor using the gas, or drive a compressor electrically and have absolutely no waste. You don't need the flare, you just save the gas. So, I think that's about it. I'd just like to have it looked at, you know? Make better use of your gas. I mean, it's just, as a petroleum engineer and a conservationist, it's just a good idea.
Any questions?
So can we get a copy of, of that reinjection article? Thank you.
She's marked it, hasn't she? Richard Atmore. Without his boots.
Good morning, Chairman Onstott, Commissioners. My name is Richard Atmore, 2977 Sexton Canyon Road, Ventura. It's a pleasure to be here today. I am here today in behalf of the, I am the current Board President of the Coastal Energy Alliance. We support all forms of energy production in the state of California. As some of the other speakers noted, California is pretty much fossil fuel dependent, and 10% of the 1.8 million barrels that are used in the United States each year are used here in California, and 66% of that oil is imported. I'm also here today as a fifth-generation Ventura County resident, who really got my roots started working in the oil industry. I was first given an opportunity working with CD, with Ed Lyons and the Ventura Avenue Oil Field, and I can remember working with Cliff Simonson 35 years ago, before we both had our first gray hair, and I think Cliff still had most of his hair. But at any rate, I've enjoyed working with him all these years, and I know he's a really responsible land manager, and manager of his oil field operations, and also Mr. Bentley, I've worked with Mr. Bentley for many years. You know, I'd also like to state that I started a business that did habitat restoration and weed abatement. I do a lot of work for the County of Ventura, but I also do a lot of work for the oil industry in the County of Ventura. And I have eight men that go to work in the Ventura Avenue Oil Field every single day, and they love that position. It's one of the safest jobs that our firm has as far as the safety record of that particular industry. All those individuals came from disadvantaged communities, and they have high-paying jobs now, where they're making either six figures or awfully close to six figures in their line of work. So I think these are really important jobs. I think that people kind of lose sight of the fact that, like the gentleman said that sat over here, the nice gentleman, he said, look at all those trucks that go up to go to work, those service trucks that go to work. That's exactly my point. Those are jobs. We shouldn't be discriminating against jobs and high-paying jobs here in Ventura County. We should look forward to those jobs and cherish those jobs. And while we have to study those impacts, I think when we see no significant impact, we have to appreciate the jobs they supply. Unlike some of the other speakers here today, I have been on the paying end of a conditional use permit. And while some people want to stand forth and say, why don't we do this every three to five years? If you've been on the paying end of a conditional use permit, you'll know they cost tens of thousands, sometimes hundreds of thousands of dollars to go through the process, depending on how many impacts that you're dealing with. I will say that the staff, the planning staff for the County of Ventura crosses every T and dots every I three times. And you know what? It cost me a lot of money when I went through my conditional use permit, but I understood and I appreciated where their work came and I appreciated where their work came from, and the hard challenge they had to do to dig through all these impacts, and the needs of the citizens of Ventura County, and the needs of the people in this country in general. And they had to weigh those and balance those two things. And they used their professional opinion with all the expertise they have. They use other expertise and rely upon all kinds of people. They go the extra mile to do what the citizens of the County of Ventura need. And in this case, they determined that this conditional use permit should go through as requested. So with that, I'd just like to clearly state that I'm completely in favor of this conditional use permit. And I think these appellants are good people. They're our neighbors, they're our friends. But I think they have a Pollyannaish idea of our energy needs at this particular time in history. And, you know, I'd just like to say that, thank you very much for having me over today, and I appreciate your time.
Any questions? Thank you. Kimberly Rivers. Here we went through this process, and you're almost last again.
That's all right, I don't mind. Chair Onstott and Commissioners, I'm Kimberly Rivers, Executive Director with Sea Frog, Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas. And we did submit that late-night comment letter. I wanted to start off by thanking very much Mr. Simonson for the studies regarding the red-legged frog. And we saw that in the record and monitored that while that was going on, and that was great to see that. And also for the information that we got today, that they opted to go ahead and put a meter on the flare. And I would say that that indicates that they are willing and able to do that. I think that issues that were brought up by Dr. Colome regarding the type of meter that it is, and whether or not it's gathering the pertinent information, should be looked into, and that that, again, should be made a condition of approval on the permit. Right? That's part of, I think the appellant has raised that issue, and it seems like it's feasible. And the question is, can it be part of the condition of the permit, and why not? And in addition, we support the addition of the fence line monitoring that provides additional information for a potential hazard should the pilot go out for that community. And just to emphasize the comments in the letter, that it really is the role of the county to condition permits to protect public health. Right? And so, should you choose to condition the meter, the applicant can say, "Yes, we can do that," or "No, we can't," and decide whether or not they're going to use that permit. And any other conditions of the permit, that same kind of process could take place. But again, your duty as decision-makers in this process is to put public health into the conditions of the permit. I did want to clarify one thing on the record that I already spoke to Mr. Simonson about. Commissioner Idukas, when you asked him a question regarding our letter, it was a little unclear. We knew that it had been properly reported to the fire department, and in our letter it was about that the cause...
I apologize for mischaracterizing it then.
That's all right. But just that, the cause was never officially reported to the public. And so I both appreciate the comment that Mr. Simonson made, giving some of that information, and just wanted to clarify that. And then also, what's being proposed right now in the appeal will not have impact on jobs. Right? So adding a flare, changing the truck route, making sure we know all the true emissions of the flare, that's not going to impact jobs here. And also, the issue about the idle flare, the idle wells, this is a statewide issue. We're not just creating this about this project. When operators are allowed to continually get CUPs, to allow them to maintain idle wells that are still active status, it causes issues into the future. And so the life of this permit is two decades, should it be approved. I totally appreciate, and I believe Mr. Simonson, that they have plans to continue operating. They are the current landowners, they are the current operators. But in 20 years, unforeseen events can occur. And what assurances do the taxpayers have that should something unforeseen, unexpected, unplanned occur, that those wells will be properly plugged? And the fact is, yes, the state does have bonds required for wells, but the bond amounts are woefully inadequate to cover the cost of properly plugging and abandoning wells. And Dogger has a list of orphaned wells across the state that are prioritized based on locations to sensitive receptors, like homes, that they are having to plug. And it is taking them years to get it done because there is no money. And so, just wanted to provide that information for you. And we support the appeal in improving this permit for public health and safety. Thank you so much.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Tina Broomand, and I'm just a resident. Creek Road 10748. Concerned mom, I'm the guy that the guy was talking about with kids, and all of that good stuff. What I would like to say is, first of all, I have been on traffic on Creek Road since we had county road worker Laura die about 100 feet from my house. Nothing has been done. Nothing. I have met with county department head, Richard Herrera, who recently retired, around my kitchen table with a neighbor, to tell him how terrible it is. I'm a little disappointed that the two gentlemen that were road workers have been dismissed, so that they couldn't really hear how bad of a concern this is. Two Thursdays ago, I just met with Mayor Johnston in Ojai, because although I'm a county resident, I'm not under his purview. I've made my communications with Supervisor Bennett about a year ago about how tragic and terrible the traffic along Creek Road has been. Not just the intersection at the highway, but the entire roadway. So when this has been looked at, I'm curious, like, why wasn't a Switters report looked at by anybody? That's who's maintaining that road, or documenting the data from that road? Not Caltrans, or anybody else. That's Highway Patrol's jurisdiction, and it's a county road. So when we're looking at Caltrans to give data or input on the effects of this, that is so far off the mark of the actual impact. To assume that running those trucks down the road at nighttime is okay in a residential zone, that's not okay. We live there. We're the ones with kids and horses, and we, I have a neighbor, 1149, pulled his mailbox because he can't get to his mail. The lady with the red fence near Encino, her house and her fence has been hit 10 times. We had an accident last night that required a highway patrol, ambulance, and a fire department because it's so bad. What has happened is, like somebody said earlier, we're a small valley. We've got basically three ways in. Many of you may live here, or have been in, obviously, into Ojai. But what we have right now is, because tourism and density has grown so much in Ojai, Creek Road has become the default freeway. So right now, you have really aggressive drivers. I have sat with Richard Herrera, who's now been replaced by some person named Norman, with a hard-to-pronounce last name. And I've sat at my kitchen table with him and explained our concerns, that we need a stop sign at Creek Road and Encino, so that the horse people can actually use it. We can't even use our road anymore. We need another stop sign at Creek Road in Hermosa. And that's what I've actually formally proposed. When I look at my numbers, we've had like 210 accidents along Creek Road, according to the Switters data that I've seen. And so when we're talking about traffic or whatever, the other concern is, did anyone look at how much maintenance that road creates? So we have tree trimmers, we have road people down there all the time. And with an already speeding situation and a lot of maintenance required on that road, it's chilling every day there's almost an accident of another person that's standing holding a sign. So I don't have a huge opinion on the overall of this. I like the other gentleman, I appreciate the open space that this provides, right? So if they're able to do drilling, I grew up here, I'm a lifelong resident, I went to Nordoff myself, but use the pipeline. Pay the money, use the pipeline. Don't have people using trucks. The road is not well-maintained. Also, one thing that you need to consider, I have a child that attends Villanova. I know that Villanova School is actively communicating right now with Caltrans, because that school is an island and has no marked crosswalk to get those kids across the highway. They're locked in right there. So if you're talking about coming up Hermosa, there is no crosswalk for Villanova. There's been a fatality also, right at the Villanova Curve within the last five years. So I know that when you're looking at stuff, it becomes difficult for us citizens, because, right, I'm a county resident, Steve Bennett is my go-to guy. I'm having to go to, really, Mayor Johnston, and to Caltrans, because we don't have a lot of representation for seeing what all these activities are and coming together. I don't know that you have visibility that Villanova is trying to get in a crosswalk, and that may affect how these trucks flow through. So thank you for listening, and hopefully you all take a drive down Creek Road really slowly and see what a big problem that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Did anyone else submit a card that I have not called? Come on up, ma'am. Please state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Kirby. I'm at 131 Longhorn Lane in Ojai. I'm part of the Persimmon Hill housing development that's straight across the creek bed from the property that we're talking about. And my main comment is, I am very much against this flare. And the reason being, even though they're saying it's not visible, it is visible. There are neighbors within the Persimmon Hill contract neighborhood that can see it when it is lit. And so, it's possible that many times when it's during the day that you can't see it, but definitely it is visible. And so I'd like you to really take a look at that, maybe see it at night, and get more of an idea of what, how that would impact the view, the night views of Ojai, whether that lights up the hillside that way. I don't think any of that has been really looked at. And I also think that this seems like we're going back in time to have a flare. And as I hear some of this more expert testimony, there's got to be other ways of channeling that gas and not having it just be burned off in a flame. So, one other side of being part of this Persimmon Hill area is, we are right up against San Antonio Creek. As you know, we've had a drought for many, many years. That area is full of dead trees and bushes, and anything that happens on that ranch that could potentially start a fire, which could happen, would greatly affect us. And so that's another area of my concern. So I just ask you to really take a look at that flare again, see if there are other more plausible options. I'm sorry that some of the options are very costly. I don't necessarily have anything against the oil company being there. They've been good neighbors for the most part, and I've, my property, I can hear the trucks. And it's not just the oil trucks, we do hear all the other comes and goings of the horses and other trucks on that ranch property. So, we are impacted, and I would just like you to slow down, because I don't want to see our air when we're only, you know, 1,000 yards away, as that one map showed, 3,000 feet. To have that kind of obnoxious air, being that close to our development bothers me now, that I've been sitting here and listening to that as well. So please, really think about it, if this was your neighborhood, would you really want that around your homes? Please think about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else submit a card or wishes to speak that hasn't spoken? Come up, ma'am. Come up, come up.
My name is Becky Collins. My husband, Tom, and I live in Persimmon Hill and have lived there for 20 years. I just want to support everything that Mary just said, and advocate for not having an open flame. One of the things that I think about is Ojai as a scoop, as a valley, and that things settle. We're not Houston, we're not on the water where we have ocean breezes to clear things out. And I think that this open flame thing is a really bad idea from a fire standpoint, from an air quality standpoint. And I really appreciate the information that's been presented, and I hope you could listen carefully and reconsider. Thank you.
Mary, would you fill out a speaker card, please, for the clerk? Thank you. Is there anyone else? We're down to applicant rebuttal, followed by appellate rebuttal, and then questions. So the applicant have a rebuttal? I'm sure you do.
Thank you, Chair Onstott. I'm going to try to take these, I've been trying to consolidate them, we've obviously heard a lot of similar concerns. So I apologize if it's a little bit disorganized at the end. I wanted to start with the comment from the City of Ojai in their PowerPoint presentation, and in the comments, that somehow this SEQA document, the original EIR from 1986, is somehow And EIR does not have an expiration date. SEQA does not have an expiration date. There have been projects that have had addendums with EIRs going back longer than the one that is at issue here today. There's a relatively well-known SEQA case that came out in 2014 that dealt with a prior EIR. And the other comment I wanted to make is, that one dealt with a challenge to the eighth addendum to that EIR, and it was upheld by the court. So, projects change, and what SEQA says is, it doesn't matter how old your SEQA document is, it matters whether or not the project has changed, whether or not the circumstances surrounding the project has changed. Do you satisfy the criteria that's set forth in SEQA itself, as well as the SEQA guidelines that talk about when you need to prepare a subsequent or supplemental EIR versus when you can do an addendum? And that's the analysis that we've done here, the county staff has done here. So, just wanted to put aside this notion that somehow the EIR had expired or was out of date. I want to also talk about the pipeline alternatives. They've gotten some discussions here, and it seems to me that there might be some confusion with regard to what was examined and the availability of the pipelines. So the first, I think, distinction that needs to be made, because there was a comment about pipelines versus trucks, is the pipeline was only used for gas. The trucks have always been utilized for the oil removal from the site. And so, and that is not changing at all, on the operational side. So again, the pipeline issue is focused on the gas, and we're visiting that issue because of the flaring, and the fact that the pipeline that was utilized historically is no longer available. And so I think that's the second distinction that needs to be made. Again, when we went through our alternatives analysis, we looked at two different pipeline options. One was, can we use the old pipeline that was used until 2003 for the gas? And the answer was no. That was not a financial no. That was, that's owned by a third party who, right now, doesn't want to allow us to use it. So, again, the cost issue that I have heard of, well, it's not the county's responsibility to ensure that this is an economically viable project, I just want to make sure that, with regard to that alternative, that wasn't the consideration. But the economic viability does come into play with regard to the use of the flare. We saw Dr. Colom, I believe, Colome, put up the excerpt from the Non-Coastal Zoning Ordinance that talks about the fact that a pipeline is preferred over flaring. But if you look at the preamble to that ordinance section, it says that these are guidelines that are supposed to be put in place if they are feasible and practical, and that includes from an economic standpoint. So the second pipeline alternative that we looked at was, can we build a new pipeline from our property for the gas to reach the SoCal gas facility? And that was determined to be economically infeasible. So hopefully, I haven't muddied the waters further, but I wanted to clarify those two distinctions, oil versus gas, new pipeline versus use of old pipeline, and where the economic infeasibility came into play. Another alternative that was suggested was the reinjection. Unfortunately for us, the geology of the site doesn't allow that to happen. Unfortunately for us, the geology of the site doesn't allow that to happen. We can't isolate the gas sufficiently once you inject it into the ground, and unfortunately, it would, it would be a hazardous condition to inject it without that isolation. It would probably lead to some of the hazards that folks have been concerned about. So, that's not a viable option from that technical standpoint.
Do you have that? I don't see that in our list of six alternatives.
It was not studied in the Exhibit 17, so it was just, this was the first time that we had heard that alternative presented to us, and I'm, you know, so we're relying on our experts back here to tell us what's viable and not. We've obviously heard comments about the truck traffic. Again, the truck traffic, that is an existing condition. We're not changing anything there. So, there was a comment from the city of Ojai in the PowerPoint about two additional trips. We're not adding trips. The operations stay the same. What we are saying is that we are willing on paper to limit our trips in the conditional use permit, whereas the prior conditional use permit did not have any type of truck limitations. The EIR envisioned that there would be significantly more trucks, truck trips and overall vehicle trips than what we're agreeing to now. I mean, 45 daily trips total for all vehicles were studied in the EIR. I think it was eight, up to eight truck trips per day. We're coming down, obviously, from the EIR, from the unlimited number in the prior CUP, and we're saying we're willing to accept those limitations. But again, we're not adding anything there. There was a comment here about the nighttime truck trips. Again, that's not our proposal. Our proposal is to have the truck trips operate during non-peak hours during the day. It was the city of Ojai, the appellate, who suggested, why don't you go ahead and do that from a nighttime perspective? So, it's interesting to hear a resident say, nope, nope, that's not a good idea. We agree with the fact that that's not a good idea. It's not part of our proposal. With regard to the alternative route that's been suggested by the city of Ojai, as well as the individual council member speaking on his own individual behalf, again, looking at the data, looking at Caltrans information, accident information, ambient traffic information, we just don't see a justification to move away from the existing truck routes. Again, it's the status quo. It's the existing condition. As soon as we get away from that, that's where we start potentially having problems. I know that it was mentioned that there were two, that there was a city council hearing in Ojai where this issue was discussed in open session, and it was recommended to move ahead with the Country Club Drive alternative. That was not the case. When the city considered whether to file the appeal that's before you, they did so via consent agenda. There was no public hearing on it. People from the public could obviously come out and talk if they wanted to during the general public comment period that you had at the start of your meeting, but the council members can't engage in discussions in that context. So, I just want to rebut the notion that this was somehow a concept that got a lot of public attention before the city of Ojai and that community came out and said, this is our preference. That's not the case. Country Club was not mentioned publicly in, in either of, there was that hearing and then a subsequent one to ratify the prior decision. And again, that was done on a consent agenda. No public discussion between the council members, no back and forth with the community. So, we have a concern. There are residents on Country Club as well. And again, we have a status quo that, it's the status quo. SEQA says that's fine. We don't have any impacts. We'd have a, we're generally open-minded about looking at alternatives, but we would have a concern about creating new impacts by switching that. We had a couple of comments about the meter, and was in, it was, there was some appreciation expressed for the fact that we've done that, that we've agreed to the more restrictive five pounds per day requirements where that's applicable, but that it needs to be a condition. It is a condition. So, it's on Page Two of Exhibit 37. There's a statement that requires the meter. There's a statement regarding the five pounds per day. So, that's, that's in writing before you. That will be a requirement going forward. With regard to the flare, there was a comment about the pilot light, a couple of comments about the pilot light and what happens if it goes out. We do have a pilot light on the flare. We do have an auto igniter, and that auto igniter is solar-powered. So, pilot light goes out, auto igniter goes back on right away. That is also something that is checked regularly, and it's recorded on our, what are called our gauge, we refer to as our gauge reports, you know, the pilot light and its functionality. And so, that's something that's being checked regularly, so the excess gas spilling out in the community is being dealt with in that fashion with the pilot light there. We heard a comment about the rock data being very high on the reactive organics, 76 pounds per day. Again, that, trying to keep it short, the rock is generally an issue with regard to the wells, not with regard to the flaring. That's coming from the APCD, APCD information on, I believe, where that number's being pulled is on the wells. Again, even if it was true, we're saying we will limit ourselves to the five pounds per day so that we stay below that threshold within the, the area plan associated with the flare. With regard to the fire danger that's been referenced, we do already have a permit from the fire department. Obviously, there's requirements that have to be satisfied there, brush clearance and so on, in order to satisfy that and, and deal with those issues. But we are, we already have received and are in compliance with those requirements. There was a reference to a violation from an inspection in 2016. Just to be clear, yes, there was a violation. It was associated with a well, not the flare, and it was abated immediately. We have a concern, again, about the financial ability to deal with idle or abandoned wells in the future. Again, it was recognized that Dogger has a program. Obviously, there's a dispute regarding the sufficiency of that program. Again, we have a property owner here, not a LSE, who's committed, worst-case scenario, there's going to be a lien on the property, and it's going to be sold to deal with those obligations if, if it comes to that, but it really won't. So, I think I've tried to cover everything. If I've missed something, we're available for questions, and thank you very much.
Any questions? Go ahead, Nora.
We've seen a couple of things presented to us on fence meter.
So, yes, thank you, and I apologize. I also have one other addition. I, I think our view on the fence monitoring is that, again, we have the automatic pilot lighting, so it's solar-powered, so I mean, we're, we're dealing with the issue there. It seems superfluous to have the fence monitoring. Also, obviously, it doesn't stop anybody else from going out and doing that on their property if they would wish to, but we think that we're already satisfying those concerns. I also wanted to mention, there was a request about the type of meter that we put, and I apologize for not mentioning this. We do have a meter. It's from Eldridge Products. It is the Master Touch Series 8600 MP. It is an inline-style thermal mass flow meter, and it's two inches.
Anything further? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appellant rebuttal?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'll try to keep my comments brief. Regarding the flare, still have not really heard any reason why the pipeline is not an option, other than the cost issues. Haven't heard any environmental or topographic or geographic issues or reasons why that could not be pursued. But again, we hear that the, the reason is that it's cost, although it was clear that they were using a pipeline previously, understandably through a third party, to transport the gas in the past. So, we'd like to see that that continued to be an option for them to consider and pursue. Also, on the flare, if this is approved, we do feel that there needs to be a condition in there regarding the monitoring of the flare. I think you heard some good testimony today from Dr. Colome, and, but again, we hear the concerns of the residents there. We hear the concerns about what happens if the pilot light goes out and the potential for those gases to reach into neighborhoods of the city of Ojai. So, again, I'm sure that there are some really excellent ways that this could all be monitored and mitigated, and we just act that the county would work with the applicant to ensure that that is a condition. On the route, again, we just feel that there are some safer options, and this is an opportunity to see a way to perhaps make this a little bit better. We do not see why you would not want to consider running this through a route where you have a controlled traffic signal. And again, I just want to state that we do appreciate your time and consideration and hearing our comments on this matter. Again, we are not outright opposed to the project moving forward. However, we feel that there are some issues that need to be concerned here, which, again, I won't drone on and on again on all what those are. But again, we feel that this could be a very good project, and we're just asking for your consideration to perhaps do a little bit more analysis, perhaps add a few additional conditions at this point. But again, we're not stating for the, for the record, we're not stating that we're opposed to this continuing forward. We just want to make sure that it is meeting the air quality rules and following the county's general plan and meeting SEQA. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you, sir. And Phil, we usually have a closing staff. You want your questions now, or do you want to wait till staff has their closing statement? Does staff have any closing comments?
Chair Onstark, yeah. I have, I have a few things that I would like to discuss, and I'm not sure whether, whether anybody else does, but Mr. McGuire handled just about all of the things that I was going to say, so I wanted to thank him very much for that. I think it's very important that we, that we understand baseline and what exactly the county is analyzing and what we're not analyzing under the law. And so, I think that we've had that discussion today. I also want to be very clear that we're talking about, I've heard residents come up and say trucks. This is, you know, this is one truck, one truck, one, one trip in, one trip out, a day maximum is, is what we're talking about. On a road that has 21,300, you know, ADT, this is one, one trip, and it's an existing, and even at that, it's existing setting. So, I really want to be careful when we talk about changing, changing truck routes, right? Do we have the information in front of us? We have all of the traffic information in front of it? Do we have anything in front of us to say, no, now we would route it into the city past a school, which we just had the conversation about trucks going past school, which we also debated with the city, that the city did not like trucks going past schools? So, it would be interesting now if we went back to the drawing board at this stage and sent even one truck past a school, since that was the nature of our last appeal on a mining truck. So, I want to be very cognizant of the, of the numbers that we're talking about and, and really be clear on the, on the city. You know, we analyze things that we wouldn't normally analyze because the city has asked us to. So, those things also reached the conclusion that they were less than significant, the greenhouse gas thresholds, less than significant, the health risks, less than significant, very, very, very low numbers. So, you're not going to see, I mean, I'm sure, if you guys had a copy of the printed staff report and all of the, the analysis, it's, it's a giant document for essentially nine existing oil wells. It's nine existing. They, they're there right now. And so, the, the issue of the feasibility of the, of the pipeline, I just want to read to you out of SEQA what we look at for feasibility. So, it, it's not that things are too expensive, so the county says you don't have to do it, right? But there is an economic feasibility that we look at through our ordinance and through SEQA. So, I'll start with SEQA 15364. Feasibility means capable of being accomplished in a successful manner within a reasonable period of time, taking into account economic, environmental, legal, social, and technological factors. So, we do take economics into account, where, where we have information on the record that's saying it could take $2 to $5 million to build a pipeline, and this is the economics of what we, of what we're making every year. Would we really, you know, force the issue of building a several-mile pipeline? With the information that was before me to make the recommendation, the recommendation of that was no. Also, Mr. Colome, you, you, you have to be careful when you put something up there that you are reading it in context. So, so when you put up the oil development guidelines and you say in your letter that the county hasn't taken, why aren't we following our rules? So, the rules that you are talking about are the guidelines that the board has adopted for oil and gas. And so, let me just read you the preamble to those standards. So, you read a section on flaring that was very specific, 5107557, but the preamble to the whole development guidelines is their general guidelines as stated in the ordinance. And it says, "The general guidelines that follow shall be used in the development of conditions which will help ensure oil development projects generate minimal negative impacts. The guidelines shall be applied whenever physically and economically feasible and practicable." It also goes on to say, "An applicant should use the guidelines in the design of the project and anticipate their use as a permit conditions unless the applicant can demonstrate that they are not feasible or practicable." So, that was the steps that the applicant had to take to saying it wasn't feasible. It's not that, that the, the specific sentence in here is saying that you should not flare, you should not flare when you're reading the preamble if it's not reasonable, practical, economically feasible. So, you just have to read it all, all together. So, I, I wouldn't want there to be any misperceptions at all that the county is not following our general plan, that we're not following our guidelines. We've had this discussion many times at the board, at the, at the, at the planning commission level. We've had it at the city council. We've had it at the municipal advisory council, that the way that the Board of Supervisors has adopted and has seen and has upheld, the last time we went to them on this topic, is the, the way that we've explained it to you today. There's a general plan policy that says, this is how we're going to do particulate matter thresholds in the county. And what we're doing is, we're relying on the air quality assessment guidelines to do that. The air quality assessment guidelines, as Mr. Vegas did, explained that, you know, there's a program in place to, to mitigating those, and that's the way that the county uses it. Of course, we are following the general plan guidelines. Of course, we're following the, the area plan guidelines. Could they be written more clear to, to link those two together, to say at the very endgame, it is the air quality guidelines that take precedence? Yes, we could make that connection more clearly, but we've had this conversation before, and the board has weighed in on it. So, the most important part for me is to not let anybody leave the room thinking that the county or the planning staff in any way is shirking their responsibilities in implementing all of the ordinance that's in front of us. That is not at all true. So, I just wanted to, to end with that.
Okay. Any questions of, of the commissioners?
We, we received information from an expert, Stephen Colome, and I was wondering if we could get expert opinion to respond to these questions that were raised in this document? Thank you.
Yeah, I took notes as best I could on everything there, because we actually hadn't seen the document, but I have a copy now. The, the first thing I wanted to touch on, I think it's kind of important, is the, the 3.17 pounds per day on the ROC. That, that is largely driven by, not the wells, not, not any of the, it's driven by the loading rack now, and that is...
Say again? It's driven by...
Driven by the loading rack, because when the truck comes in, it, it comes in empty, and you need to move the crude oil from the tanks into the truck, and that causes the vapors in that truck to be emitted. So, and obviously, since you're only having one truck a day, that event's only going to happen maximum once per day. So, just to put, that's, you know, it's, it's not some other sources that are ongoing throughout the day that are causing that. It's the loading rack. There was a little, some questions on the glycol dehydrator, and shouldn't it be used to keep the moisture content of the gas down? We just, we note that in our experience, it really hasn't been a problem, moisture content with flares. One of the good things about flares is, they're very good at destroying reactive organic compounds, and they're, they're very stable. They're well-known as far as emission factors go. And matter of fact, when we look at the gas going into large flares at landfills where you can have variations in moisture content, we have not seen the... you can have variations in moisture content, we have not seen the efficiency really change in an appreciable manner. So they're always able to meet their limits, I wanted to be clear on that. And then talking about the gas leak that was found, you have to keep in mind that 16,000 ppm is 1.6% and if we assume it's all methane, which would be, you know, the best assumption, the lower explosive limit for methane is 5%. So you're under that. And that's really not the critical issue. The critical issue is when we check a leak, we go out there with our equipment and we hold the probe directly adjacent to the potential leak spot. Now, if you pull that probe back a foot, you're not going to see 16,000 ppm. And if you step back five feet, you might not see anything at all. So that's just to put things in perspective as far as risk from a leak. And let me see, there was one other thing. And yes, we wanted, once again, we had looked into the fact, they do have continuous pilot backed up by a smart igniter, solar powered, and we have looked at one of the reports and we do concur that they are, you know, they're making notes that they're checking that daily. And I think that's it for me.
What about the issue, ladies said that the flare was visible from Persimmon Hill. It's internal combustion, how is that possible?
No, flare is external combustion. And I'm just, we're not the visible folk, you know, light pollution isn't our forte. I personally don't know right now if that was a shrouded flare or not at this facility, so I can't speak to it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You have more?
I would direct this question to the applicant. Thank you very much, sir. Is the flare shrouded?
Yes, the flare is shrouded, so it's in that cylinder that I believe we saw a picture of before. If you look at the staff report, it doesn't say that the flare is invisible or not visible, it says it's not prominently visible. So just looking at the pictures that we saw from Torrance, or I think most folks maybe would think about the flare that's off the 101 north of Santa Barbara, that's not reflective of what is seen out on the property. But, and then the flare and the other equipment have also been, I guess, painted to try to blend into the hillside more. It's not on a hill, the flare itself is not on a hillside, it's not, doesn't silhouette against a ridgeline or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I first want to say thank you to everybody who showed up here today. And starting with the county staff, you know, they have obviously put a lot of effort into the documents we've seen and the presentation today. And I would like to welcome Jennifer, our new Commercial Industrial Permit Section Manager, maybe wave your hand, who will be working with us on these kinds of projects. And I want to thank the applicant and their representatives and also the appellant. I live in the Ojai Valley, I'm familiar with Ojai, obviously. I want to thank the APCD, my brothers, I used to work at the APCD long ago and very in tune with what their mission is. And I want to thank all the people who came and either supported or opposed this. As I mentioned earlier, I did make a site visit yesterday, thank you very much, to Mr. Simonson and the representative from CESP, their consultant, who gave me a great tour of the facility. It's just an absolutely beautiful property with thatchers' horses and big oak trees and the view of the Topa Topas. Only one sore thumb there and that's the flare, which is a waste of good natural gas, it's a shame to see it. I think that after hearing all this today, that I want to propose that staff do some additional analysis on this project. And I'm not suggesting that we say no to this project, don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting that. Or even proposing a new EIR. I think the guidelines are clear that the limits of triggering an EIR probably aren't there. However, a revised addendum which clarifies some of the questions raised today to analyze these problems in more detail might lead to conditions which would mitigate those problems. And I have two concerns. The first is the truck routing. And as I say, I live in Ojai and I commute, I came through the intersection of Creek Road and 33 this morning coming here. I work in Ventura, so I drive that route twice a day, coming to Ventura and then returning to Ojai. When I come home, I come up 33 and turn right on Creek Road because it's a beautiful road and I do drive slowly and try to be safe. It's much more scenic route than going through Oakview. However, I don't make that left turn when I go to work in the morning. I don't come down Creek Road and turn left onto 33. I think it's incredibly dangerous. Just yesterday, as I came home from work and made, making my right-hand turn onto Creek Road, a car turned left out of Creek Road onto 33, in between two cars coming south, just so close to an accident, I just had to shake my head. So I'm concerned about that intersection, there may be a better alternative. Councilman Wirick from Ojai suggested country club, I don't know if that's feasible. So truck routes, that's my first concern. My second concern are the emissions, the air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions from this facility, from the flare. First, let me talk about truck routes. Creek Road and 33 is bad, I mentioned that. I think we really need to take a hard look at alternatives. I know I wouldn't feel good about putting my name on saying, yeah, we think this is a good, safe idea to encourage people to make that left-hand turn off of Creek Road onto 33. On air quality, I know that, I'm new to all this, I'm not new to air pollution control, but I'm new to the way air pollution gets analyzed in the county. And I know that there, in the Ojai Valley area plan, there's a five-pound-per-day limit above which, as I understand, an EIR would need to be prepared and the air pollution impacts analyzed. And I'm understanding that this project would be less than that. But that doesn't mean that the emissions from this flare don't create an air pollution problem. They do. The fact that you don't need an EIR doesn't mean there isn't an impact. We need to all remember that Ventura County has an ozone problem and air quality, a health problem. The county regularly exceeds federal and state air quality standards for ozone. So far, in 2017, Ventura County Air Pollution Control Monitoring Stations have measured ozone 22 days in excess of the state standard, state health standard. We can't ignore even small sources of air pollution, even if they don't trigger a five-pound-per-day EIR. I think we need to talk about climate change. This flare is a source of emissions that would exacerbate climate change. And one of our charges as planning commissioners is, coming up in the general plan update, will be to develop policies and programs to reduce the impact of climate change. And so even though, even though the greenhouse gas emissions are less than either 1,000 tons per year or 10,000, take your number, they're not trivial, they're not unimportant, they are important, and we need to be doing what we can to mitigate them. In the, the one thing I found when I got back into air pollution stuff is the AQAG, air quality assessment guidelines, because this was a new one to me that happened since I was at the APCD. And on, can we put up page seven of the revised EIR? Because it talks about that extensively and I want to comment on that. It's in, it's one of the exhibits, it's- The revised EIR addendum? It's page seven of 25. Do you need the-
Commissioner Onstott, I mean, White, when you're asking for us to put it up, are you asking your fellow commissioners to load it up on their, because we don't have it available?
Oh, you don't?
No.
Okay, well, let me just, let me just read from it.
We, it's Exhibit 13 of the EIR addendum. We have the document on our computer. I'm sorry that we don't have it for the public, but it's on the county website.
Okay, this-
Just to be clear, I'm not sure I want everybody reading off the wrong doc. It's Exhibit 38, which is the addendum that we're talking about for today's hearing, is that correct?
The exhibit you just mentioned.
Thirty-eight.
She said 38, so let me go back to that. Revised final EIR addendum?
Yeah.
That's, okay, 38. Thank you.
Well, let me just read from there. And it's basically talking about how do you assess the impacts of projects on air quality? And what it says is in the Ojai Valley, that if the emissions exceed five pounds per day of either NOx or reactive organic compounds, then that, you need to do an EIR and evaluate those emissions. For the balance of the county, there's a higher number, 20 pounds per day, I believe. I think Ojai is justified in having the smaller number because of the small air basin that's there. But nevertheless, here's what it says about air quality assessment guidelines. According to the air quality assessment guidelines, emissions that are permitted by APCD do not count towards the five-pound-per-day threshold. And when I first saw that, I go, wow, why not? And here's the answer. According to the air quality assessment guidelines, this is for two reasons. First, such equipment or processes are subject to the district's new source review permit system, which is designed to produce a net quality improvement. That means, to me, probably offsetting the emissions so that there's no increase. Second, facilities are required to mitigate emissions from equipment or processes subject to APCD permit by using emission offsets, there where they say it directly, and by installing best available control technology on the processor equipment. Now, with respect to this project, I don't think either of those two things is likely to happen from the way APCD is operating presently. And we can clarify this with Mike, I suppose, whether Bentley will be required to offset their emissions somehow. And secondly, whether they will be required to install BACT, best available control technology. For a flare, best available control technology is a low emission burner. You know, I point that out because it seems to me to be a problem. How do we realistically assess air quality impacts if we're saying, oh, we don't look at those because APCD is mitigating them? Well, if they're not mitigating them, then that doesn't make sense. Okay. I think that what we need in the way of air quality and emissions impacts analysis in a revised EIR addendum would be the following, that we try to come up with alternatives that would provide a beneficial use for the gas that's being flared, that's being wasted. And I don't think I heard yesterday from the applicant's representative that they wouldn't like to do that. I believe they would like to put that gas to beneficial use. And a couple of options, some of which have been discussed in a little bit of detail, include generating electricity from the natural gas that's being burned, using microturbines or perhaps other kinds of generators. The ranch does use electricity, you know, each of the wells has a motor to run the pump and there are some buildings there that are burning electricity. So there are places, just like they're using the gas to serve, to serve the house, I believe somebody said a dryer and some other use there, they could do the same thing with electricity. I think the option of reinjecting the gas needs to be analyzed. I suggested this for the Renpet project in Oxnard as an option. I think it does make sense, but I'm not an expert on that, but I think it needs to be analyzed. I think a revised analysis would include further discussion of the pipeline that was used in the past, the, I guess now owned by Carbon. Unfortunate name for a petroleum company in California, as Mr. Simonson pointed out yesterday. It sounds like there may be some opportunity for Bentley to reuse that pipeline if Carbon uses it again, or it's presently apparently shut down. I think we need a more complete analysis of that so that we understand what are those options. Finally, I think that this analysis, I don't object to what Mr. Simonson did on Exhibit 17, the gas disposal alternatives to flaring. But I think we need, probably need an independent third party to do this analysis, make sure that we're not overlooking something that might be important. I want to emphasize that taking the time to revise the EIR addendum doesn't shut down this project. They will still operate and it's not like we're, by doing this, we're going to say, oh, no, you got to shut off all of your operations. They will continue to operate. And in summary, I would support a motion to send the EIR addendum back to staff to address the truck route alternatives and the mitigation of flaring impacts as I described. Thank you.
Anyone have any more questions?
On that Exhibit 13, I think we have a range of alternatives that were analyzed with regard to what to do with this gas. And one of the ones that was brought up was re-injection of the gas into the formation, but we just heard summarily that that's not feasible. But I don't have anything, you know- But I don't have anything, you know, before me on that. I want to know what, you know, is it, isn't it, is it, you know, something that, it would seem to me that it would solve a, a couple of problems, and given that we've had this subject before us very recently, I, I kind of expected it. So I'm not really sure why we don't have it.
We do have testimony by the applicant that the reservoir is not a sufficient type to hold the gas and that it would migrate.
I understand we have that verbally, I don't see any kind of analysis that was presented to us in our, in our alternatives analysis on our addendum, so that's what I'm pointing out.
I understand. I'm prepared to close the public hearing. Do you have further statements or that might clarify issues for us?
So Chair Onstott, just very quickly, I, I do think that it's important that Mr. Villegas spend some time to address Commissioner White's issues about how these smaller projects are being mitigated. I think that's an important discussion. And then I do think Mr. Baca, with his licensing and credentials, could speak to the issue of the formation issue, so I'd like to address those two.
That's fine. We'll continue the public hearing. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, so with respect to our new source review program and how we mitigate air emissions, the one thing you have to keep in mind is, in California, we have a new source review program that's supposed to achieve no net increase in emissions from facilities, and in our county, it's over five tons per year. Now you think, well, gee, don't the small facilities get a pass from that? Well, this is how it works. Anyone over five tons per year has to offset at a ratio greater than one ton of reduction for every ton of increase. So when the larger facilities, especially the ones over 25, they traded a ratio of 1.3 to 1, those excess emission reduction offsets are used to handle the small facilities. So in essence, if you're permitted in Ventura County, you're subject to this no net increase, and it's in, through our programs, it's mitigated. And the reason the air quality assessment guidelines say you don't count these is, you've required a facility to purchase offsets that are currently going at 60 to $70,000 a ton to offset their emissions. And then we're going to come back and say, now I need you to mitigate them sous sequo again. We're not subjecting them to mitigating their emissions twice. And, and that's what's very different with stationary sources. Mobile sources aren't treated that way, and that's why they're, you look at those in the SEQA process. So that's something very important. And as far as best available control technology goes, that, it's a term that gets used a little too widely. There's two terms that are really key, best available retrofit control technology and best available control technology. Best available control technology applies when you're adding new equipment or modifying equipment, because that's the best time to invest in the best controls available. When this flare came forward to us and added to our permit, it was in the 2013-14 timeframe. At that time, backed for flares in this size range was not the ultra-low NOx combustion flare. They weren't available yet in this size range. And what we do is, we look at it without regard to cost, but if it's achieved in practice, that means if there's some other oil field in the United States using an ultra-low NOx flare at that time, even if it's above the cost effectiveness thresholds, we would require it. But we did not because they weren't achieved in practice at that time. And when you adopt a rule for existing facilities, you're looking at retrofit control technology, and that is different. It's less stringent because you're going and asking people to apply new controls to an existing facility even though they're not making any change at the time. I hope that clarifies things, because with permitted facilities, they're mitigating their emissions, the large facilities are emitting, I mean, are mitigating at a greater than one to one to compensate for the small facilities. And I agree that this year, we were 22 days over the standard. When you look at air quality data, it varies significantly with meteorology. Matter of fact, it kind of looks like if you took the stock market and flipped it the other way, that it was going down. It's very jagged. And what happens, year to year, you can get a significant downswing or upswing. This summer, we had one of the hottest summers we'd have experienced in Southern California in some time. Matter of fact, the weekend where we picked up some exceedances, key, three of that, one week, three over that little period, it was so hot, I took my son down to Pomona because he's going to school down there to get an apartment. We left at seven in the evening, got to Ventura at nine, we got out of the car, thought we were still in Pomona. It was, it felt like it was like 90 degrees at eight, and yes, you are going to have variability year to year. But it's important to look at that 22 as one of the worst things we've seen in recent history. Okay, the worst year we've seen in recent history as far as heat. Go back to 2005, we were over 60 days. So the program is working. Even in the hottest summer we experienced in a long time, we're better off than we were in 2005. The other thing that I think people miss is, we require flares because we want to minimize ROC emissions because they are precursors to ozone. And basically, we require vapor recovery on everything in the oil field, the tanks, the case, the gas coming from the wells, et cetera, to be controlled. And there's really three options. You can sell it to SoCal Gas, and that's the best case, because then it's going to useful work. You can burn it onsite at the facility, and Bentley's doing that to the extent feasible in the closed dryers and the water heaters that they have available to them. Or you have to route it to a flare. And the reason we require a flare is, from our perspective, it's a control device, meaning you have a lot of ROC going to the flare, you're oxidizing it with the flame, so you're basically, you're destroying 95 plus 98% of the ROC, but you are creating some nitrogen oxides. But you destroy much more ROC than the increase in nitrogen oxide, so there's a net air quality benefit. The same thing's happening with climate change. If we let methane, which has a global warming potential of at least 25 times CO2, uncontrolled in the air, that's bad for climate change. But if we destroy the methane in the flare and create some carbon dioxide, which is 1/25th the global warming potential of methane, we're ahead of the game on both air quality and climate change. Last thing I wanted to touch on is fence line monitoring. The California Legislature recently rolled out some new legislation that's going to start looking at fence line monitoring. But in the first go rounds, and, and probably for the foreseeable future, we're going to see those type of, that type of equipment deployed at situations such as a refinery, where you, you have profit, process offsets. And when you look at what's happened in Torrance and Richmond in the Bay Area, you read in the paper, yes, people had the shelter in place because of an upset at a refinery. When was the last time you read in the paper that someone had to shelter in place because a flare went out at an oil field? That's what I'm seeing. You, if we're going to spend a lot of money as a society on fence line monitoring, they're going to go to the sources that are the biggest potential problems initially. So I think we need to consider that.
Go ahead, Phil.
Mike, you mentioned, what are the options for dealing with gas produced? He said sell the gas, use the gas as, as Bentley's doing onsite there in a small way, or flare the gas. You mentioned three. Would you agree that there are a couple more? One would be to generate electricity with the gas, and secondly, to inject the gas back underground?
Yeah, the injection could work where it's feasible, and I'm not the one to discuss that with you, but when I meant use the gas onsite, yes, energy generation would be one of the options. One thing to keep in mind, micro turbines are fairly pricey. They are pricey pieces of equipment. When you look at the Air Pollution Control District, our board has very clearly said the cost effectiveness threshold for best available control technology is $9 per pound of ROC or NOx reduced on an annualized basis. So you would have to look at that and determine if that will fall, if it was cost effective or not. And in most cases, when you get to smaller facilities, it tends to be expensive and...
Can I follow up?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Excuse me, let me just ask you a question, finish up. These are the, the things you just mentioned, the cost effectiveness, would be things that should be analyzed in a, in a revised addendum?
And let's...
According to... I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I'm, I think that's...
There are two standards. One is best available type of control, there were two standards. One was for new equipment and one was for existing. And I understand that the flare is existing, but it was not permitted to be an ongoing. It was only for emergency. So my question is, I'm not really sure who to direct it to. Is it existing or is it something new?
On our permit, it's existing.
And from the, from the standpoint of our project, I believe we're, we're analyzing it as if it is new.
Once more into the breach.
This is a very uncomfortable place to stand. Chairman Onstott, members of the planning commission, the flare as a physical device exists. There it is. So it's part of the existing setting as a physical device. Part of the, the, well, the project before you is largely converting that physical device from part-time use to full-time use. Now, I'll point out that the emissions that have been calculated for this flare do not subtract out the historic emergency use and the emissions that are, that occurred historically under the previous permit. The total of the emissions is what is being reported. But it, it's use and its operation on a full-time basis is part of the project.
But I understand that there's different standards in place for whether it's a retrofit or whether, you know, that, and, and again, this isn't within our purview, this is, I guess, for informational purposes. But, but don't they follow our lead on whether or not something is new or retrofit? Because of what I understand is that we're looking at this full-time flare, you know, in lieu of the pipeline, so it's new.
Commissioner Idoukas, the flare has received and been issued a permit to operate by the Air Pollution Control District. And so therefore, I would assume that it meets all standards. It physically exists, and perhaps for their permitting purposes, it, the land use issue of how often it is operated does not come into play in terms of retrofitting or the level of BACT that is required. I'll leave that up to Mr. Villegas to respond to.
Okay, and could you, could you also, since you're up there, talk about the, the analysis that was done regarding reinjection of the gas into the formation?
Certainly. I'll start out by saying that my name is Brian Baca. I'm a certified engineering geologist, registered geologist, and certified hydrogeologist in the state of California, and, and used to be, for eight years, a member of the State Mining and Geology Board. I also worked 10 years for Union Oil Company of California as a petroleum geologist. Reinjection of gas is not as simple as it sounds. If you reinject gas into the formation from which you're producing oil and gas and trained with it, you will just gas out that unit and end up recycling gas in a, in a loop, where the gas will push out the oil and you'll just be producing more and more gas, and, and you'll eventually not have any oil production. To reinject the gas in, in terms of what you're thinking of, in terms of disposal of gas and having it stored below ground, you'd have to find an isolated unit somewhere below, geologically below ground, that you could put the gas into, that would have the volume and the pressure that would allow gas to be injected over time. That pressure and that volume would not be infinite. You'd, there'd be a limit to how much gas you could put in. At some point, you can reach the point where you cannot put any more gas in because the pressure you're building up would exceed the pressure gradient of your equipment. So gas reinjection is normally done in places where you're doing enhanced recovery, where you're using that to get, to repressurize the reservoir to a certain point. It's not normally done as an infinite item where you continually do it over time. In the case of these wells, I would like to point out, you, you had asked the question earlier, were the nine existing wells that are before you today, were they considered in the EIR that was done 30 years ago? Was it his question? Her question? Okay. But the question that was received, well, they, they were considered because they were part of the existing setting at the time the EIR was done, and the proposal was to include, included continued operation of the nine wells and 32 more wells. And so here we are, 30 years later, and the project is continued operation of the existing nine wells, the same exact nine wells, but no new wells. So this is, that's the difference between today and 30 years ago. But it would be an expensive endeavor to do gas reinjection. It would also cause a change in the project description, which is beyond what has been proposed. They would have to use one of the nine wells, which they want to keep and reserve for production, they'd have to use one of those wells for injection. They'd also have to do engineering to re-perforate the well and have additional testing and perhaps engineering done for it to be allowed to be used as an injection well. So I would tell you that there's no evidence that it's feasible to do so. And, and they have, probably have difficulty even proving that up, whether it's feasible because of the age of the wells and the level of subsurface information that's available. It's likely that it's a fractured Monterey reservoir where there's no isolated zone for where they could inject gas. And so I, I think that the, the alternatives that they looked at to satisfy the requirements of the oil development guidelines of the non-coastal zoning ordinance were adequate to establish that it's not economically or practically feasible to do anything with the gas except flare it.
Or generate electricity.
I, I don't have any comments. You, I mean, Mr. White, I disagreed with him at one time, and I hate to report that I was wrong and he was right, that productive use of gas that is potentially being flared is a direct offset to greenhouse gas emissions, you know, on, on a, a global scale. And that's because of the way the gas system in California works, is that if you have too much gas at the various storage units, somewhere in the area, in, largely in Sacramento Valley, a gas well is turned off automatically when the pressure gets to a certain point. So anytime you take flared gas and you offset, you know, some other productive use, it reduces greenhouse gas emissions. However, as the, the Air Pollution Control District has analyzed, in this case, the greenhouse gas emissions are 865 metric tons per year and not a significant level. I would also point out that we don't require mitigation, and the law does not require mitigation, that's SEQA, for adverse impacts that are not significant. And, and so we, we don't normally go around searching for mitigation for less than significant impacts. In fact, the law says we don't.
Any further? Thank you, sir.
We're getting, just to the end, I hope. The definition in our new source review program is based on the federal and California Cleaner Acts, and the way we would define new is a new piece of equipment being added to our permit and the flare is existing. So, you know, our program, like I said, it's this closed system, this is supposed to result in no net increase in emissions. It runs under very strict guidance from both the federal and the state. And lastly, I just want to assure everybody, you know, the flow meter, I think that's wonderful to have it there, but our assumptions, both on greenhouse gases, toxics, and the ROC and NOx, are based on maximum capacity of the flare running 24/7/365. So you couldn't, the flare's not physically capable of generating emissions higher than we assumed, so.
Go ahead, Bill.
Just a question, Mike. Does this property, this flare, have the, the latest BACT burner?
No, as I explained before, since it was, it came under our permit in 2013, those burners were not yet available in this size range.
But perhaps they could install one now that would reduce emissions?
That would re, I mean, we would have to adopt a rule that would need, you know, public workshops...
Or they could do it voluntarily. Or they could do it voluntarily?
Certainly.
Or is a CUP permit condition?
I don't know how that would...
Okay. Thank you.
Can I direct a question to county council? Is it within our purview to require the applicant, the applicant to voluntarily meet these more stringent standards?
Do you require him to voluntarily do something?
That's what I said. That would be a condition of the CUP. Is that within our abilities here?
Yeah, right. So as Chair Anstott said, it wouldn't be voluntary. It would be imposed as a condition of approval. I think the answer is yes, it could be. Where, where I, and I think the logic would be that, it sounds to me, and please, someone correct me if I'm wrong, that the full-time flare was installed even though it wasn't approved under the land use permit that was in effect at the time. And so now we're approving it. So I think that's within your commission's discretion, but I would advise stating a rationale supporting that decision if it's made that's linked to the findings of approval. Because from what I've heard, it's not required to mitigate an impact under CEQA. And so I guess I should back up, and I've said this before, with regards to every project, your commission needs to make findings of approval under our non-coastal zoning ordinance and also needs to approve a CEQA document. And as Mr. Baca alluded to, when you're, and this is kind of just a general statement, you know, in terms of Commissioner White's proposed motion, you only mitigate impacts that are potentially significant. And so if that's not the case, then you would need to make a finding under the findings for permit approval. And so that's the box that you would place it in and you would state a rationale for that. But before you did that, I would, I would highly encourage you to open up the public hearing and to give the applicant a chance to chime in on that because this is, this is something new and I think due process or no due process warrants that because there could be questions of feasibility for that as well. And if it's, if it's too costly, then there's an argument that it's, it would be an unlawful exaction. And so it's a new issue and I don't think you should, you know, impose it lightly, if you will. And I guess just to close the loop while I'm speaking, I speak as little as possible, in terms of sending the addendum back to staff for further analysis, again, from what I've heard, and, you know, your commission hasn't made a final decision, but the whole purpose of an addendum is to make sure that the EIR previous CEQA document is up to date and that there's no new significant impacts associated with the project going forward. I haven't heard your commission express concerns that there are new significant impacts. The concerns that I've heard are more, again, in the, you know, maybe we could make this project better under our conditions of approval, I mean, under our findings of approval as opposed to under CEQA. And so I would just caution you not to require further analysis in the addendum unless you can make a finding that there's a significant environmental impact involved with the proposed project.
Could we reopen the public hearing and get the applicant's point of view on the feasibility of installing either the flare or beneficial use of the gas?
I'm more than willing to do that, but I would point out what county council just said, we have had no evidentiary support...
I would just like to hear their statement.
Keep in mind that we have testimony that they, the income derived from the CUP is $75,000 per year. We're talking about three operational wells of nine. It's de minimis. I have seen no information...
So are you unwilling?
No, I'm going to reopen, but I'm saying, think this through. I don't know why we're going this way. We have no evidentiary support for this. Sure, Phil.
May I comment? I want to comment on what Jeff said about mitigation. The county staff asked the applicant to prepare a report analyzing mitigation of not using the pipeline for their gas and instead flaring it. So isn't that inherent in what we're doing here today?
No, my understanding of that issue is that it goes to the feasibility of piping as opposed to flaring, and so that's directly related to our oil development guidelines. And so that, that information is required to allow your commission to decide, you know, whether or not piping is feasible. So that's, that's not CEQA, that's our own oil development guidelines.
But isn't there also before us the certification of the addendum that has a reasonable range of feasible alternatives that, to that, you know, disposal of that gas?
No. Yeah, no. I'm glad that you asked that. Alternatives analysis does not occur in an addendum. That occurs in an environmental impact report. And so in order to get there and to require an alternatives analysis, you would have to find, like I said before, that a significant impact is associated with the proposed project. Now, if your commission doesn't feel like you have enough information to make that determination, that would be a reason to send the addendum back, but you cannot require an alternatives analysis in the addendum itself.
I just said we are in a box.
Do you still want to reopen? Nora?
Sure. Just to keep the response...
Going to reopen the public hearing. I'd ask the applicant to please stand and come forward.
And just narrowly, those two...
Can I have one moment, though, with...
Go ahead, sir.
Representative, before I come back.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
You want to take five minutes?
Sure.
So if they can't prove it, then we won't allow the project to go ahead.
I see. Anybody have any questions? Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
Okay.
What's more?
Can I come back up and answer the question now? I apologize for the break.
No.
So, we have heard the concerns and certainly we've tried to be responsive as much as we can to these issues. To that end, we did install the permanent meter to make sure that enforcement is easier and more accurate than it would otherwise be. That was a substantial amount as well. That cost us $5,000 just to put the meter in. I think what we're struggling with on the incinerator is an unknown cost, but also an unknown benefit. There doesn't seem to be a strong view that there's a substantial benefit in heading in that direction. Certainly an improvement, but we just, we haven't been able to quantify that or come up with anything there. So, I think from our perspective, you know, we look at projects all the time that through the CEQA analysis or otherwise, you deal with mitigation measures. And what you're doing there with those mitigation measures is, there's a threshold under CEQA for when you have a significant impact. And you have to mitigate, and sometimes that comes out of cost, to get below that level of significance. We're already there. You know, we're not trying to come back down. CEQA doesn't require you to come back down to zero. So, we're below that standard and I think, you know, not knowing the cost benefit side of things, I think, you know, we're, you know, concerned about agreeing to any additional conditions when we're already in a state where we're below the standards. So, that's our feelings right now. Those are our feelings right now.
Somewhere in the moving documents and papers, I saw an estimate of income from this conditional use permit, $75,000, is that correct?
I believe it's a, just, yes, right around there, yes.
I think right.
In Exhibit 17, there was an analysis, a projection of, and that's gross revenue, by the way.
Okay, right, I understand. I also saw that there was a projection for a replacement pipeline, a cost of about somewhere near about $2.8 million?
Yes, Chair.
Okay.
Could be higher.
Plus you'd have to obtain easements, I assume?
Yes.
Well, what's the situation regarding the existing pipeline? It's owned by someone else and they cut your use for whatever reason?
Well, their pipeline was interrupted and so they actually have a physical disconnection in the pipeline that goes back almost 15 years. And so, in order for the new owner, now Carbon, to bring that online, they have to look at their own operations, whether it even makes sense for them to reopen that pipeline. They have some operations in, over the hill that may impact that or not. But they also have to go through a process to bring that online. They've got to go through, I don't know if it would, if it's accurate to characterize it as starting from scratch, but there's a lot of work that has to be done to bring that pipeline back into compliance. So, for example, they have to do a new pressurization test. That alone, I believe, is a million dollars. So, there may not be an, that, again, remember, our, our reason for that being infeasible was not economic based, but they may have a reason for, an economic reason for not being able to bring that back in.
Go ahead.
Neil, just a quick question. If during this 20-year period of the CUP, that pipeline does become available to you again, is it your intent then to go back to utilizing the pipeline?
Absolutely. I mean, we have all the incentive in the world to make use of that gas if we can.
Is that a condition or something that can be added to the conditional use permit?
I don't think you need to. It's economically in their best interest to do it. They'd be pleased not to.
Okay. So then there's really no reason to ask them to put it in writing?
I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Wait just a second. Does anybody?
But, but we could ask for that.
Sure you can.
Yeah.
Is there any further questions regarding economic feasibility and alternatives?
The other alternative was to generate electricity.
So, can I make one comment on the prior?
Certainly.
So, if, if there is a consideration of adding a condition for the, to use the existing pipeline, if I could just ask that that language, that that condition incorporate language that tracks the preamble to the non-coastal zoning ordinance sections, that talks about practical and feasibility economic, just, so we're clear there. We don't want a situation where we're being held hostage by Carbon because we have a, we're compelled to, yeah.
Right, no, no, I understand.
Certainly understandable. With regard to the electricity, so, the issue is, it was addressed in the alternatives analysis in the exhibits. Essentially, the issue is that we don't have enough of a demand on the ranch to justify the cost of the microturbines. So, there was a reference to the fact that there's wells that utilize electricity. Only two of them have pumps right now. So, there's a third well that's active that's just free flowing. The other wells don't have pumps on them right now. And so, unfortunate electrics, electricity demand just isn't high enough to justify.
And there's no way to sell it back to?
So, we can't connect to the grid being that small. Solar facilities that are that small can connect to the grid, but if we're not solar, we don't have that opportunity.
And then what about enclosing the flare?
Well, it's already entirely.
It's sheathed.
I'm gonna have to turn this one over to Mr. Simonson.
It's sheathed.
Come ahead, sir. Don't want you to miss another opportunity.
Commissioners, the current flare is a large round pipe and the flame is hidden within that. In addition, as we saw yesterday, we added an additional shroud above it in the event that there's a updraft that would cause like a, you know, flame to be visible.
But there is such a thing as enclosed, having it completely enclosed?
It is, it is completely enclosed, except for there's a draft ports or vents on the bottom that allow air to come out. So, it's, which are about that high. I will add that we had some screening there. There was a large oak tree that we saw that actually fell and that may be the reason that there, there may be some reflection coming out of the air vents. We could actually, we'll, we'll add additional screening once we remove this tree that fell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not exactly sure where we are. Are we ready to close the public hearing again?
You would have, give the opportunity for the city, the appellant, to respond if they so wish.
Certainly. Does the appellant have further responses? Unless there's some other reason? Phil? No?
Are we gonna close?
I'm gonna close the public hearing. All right, the public hearing is closed. Discussion?
In my earlier comments, I, I had said I would support a motion sending the EIR addendum back to staff. I just had a conversation with county council who told me that, that really is not the right way to go. And I asked the question, well, can we ask that the analysis of alternatives be performed again? And the answer was yes. And so, I would like to frame a motion that would, would ask that county staff revise the analysis, truck traffic and alternatives to flaring be put together and for, for future consideration. And I would, I would add that, well, no, I'll leave that as my motion and we can argue about the details.
Well, I'm, I'm confused what information you got, you know, on a sidebar. Is this something that, that we would ask for in this, the EIR addendum?
I'm told by county council that that would not be appropriate to do an EIR addendum because of the way CEQA is written. And so, I don't want to suggest something that violates the law. But, but I do think that the county, the commission would benefit from having some additional information. There may be some conditions that arise from that analysis that would make this a better project.
So, so this would be in the form of a staff report that would come back? So, are you asking for a continuance until we get that staff report that, that addresses these questions?
I, I guess that would need to be, yeah, incorporated in the motion, you know, to continue this until that comes back. Is that a logical proposal?
It is. And, and just to clarify my advice to Commissioner White, we discussed the, the alternatives to flaring. We didn't discuss, discuss the truck traffic. And so, my advice to the alternatives to flaring was, that's an issue in terms of the project's compliance with the county's oil development guidelines. And so, that's, that's an issue under the county's own rules as opposed to under CEQA. And it sounds like you're, you're concerned about truck traffic too. That obviously wouldn't be under the oil development guidelines, but as I stated earlier, if, if you feel like you don't have enough information to make the approval findings for the permit as a whole, then that's another issue that is within your right to send back to staff for further analysis. But again, it wouldn't be under CEQA. It would be under the, your inability at this point, which sounds like what you're saying, to, to make the, the permit approval findings.
That is what I'm saying, yes.
First of all, I just want to thank everyone who's come out today and talked to us. A lot of information coming our way. I feel like we're somewhat discounting all the work that staff has already done in analyzing, in analyzing this and bringing us so much information. I can honestly say I've not heard one shred of evidence that would require us to send this back for a further analysis. And I, I'm trying to find something. I go to truck traffic and the only vehicles on that road that have proven to be safe for 30 years have been the trucks. So, I'm not quite sure I understand why we even are talking about this particular issue. It's really the vehicles who are present, prevented, presented the problem and maybe they need to be rerouted and the truck, the trucks are actually safe. And we're only talking about one truck a day that's going to be making that left-hand turn. And I've actually been there once or twice, so I'm, I'm familiar with it. Feasibility is, is a big thing. And this is not a big company making, producing large amount of oil. It's actually relatively small. And I'm not sure why there's so much discussion about asking them to do more than what they've already done and what they voluntarily have done before they even got here today that they were not required to do. I do understand the issues with third parties and the pipeline issue and I understand too that we probably would have to work on the wording as to whether or not we should put a condition in the CUP about access to that pipeline if it became available to you again. So, I'm really struggling with why we continue to place so much conditions on a company that's already doing so much to mitigate issues and they're already under that level of significance. So, maybe you guys can help me understand why we want to do that.
Let me chime in. I, I echo that position. With regard to truck traffic, you've adequately stated the case as far as I'm concerned, the traffic. We've had some discussion about an alternate, alternate route, which wasn't before, is from a city councilman from the city of Ojai, yet the city itself didn't propose this route. And based on my personal experience sitting up here, every time anyone has ever suggested that we run another truck through the city of Ojai, it's been not only no, but hell no. And so, I'd hate to open this whole thing up again to run down that road. I just don't see, there's no substantive basis for not going forward as far as I'm concerned and approving the staff recommendation regarding the flaring and the alternatives. Another pipeline isn't a feasible opportunity. We've had testimony that you can't inject it because they don't have a sufficient reservoir and even if they did, or any of these other options were available, they're not economically feasible. We've got a $75,000 income and six, three producing wells. These people have been good citizens. They've even agreed to reduce the number of truck trips and that wasn't in the CUP. They will not operate during peak traffic periods. I don't know what more these people can do. I understand, appreciate, everyone is concerned about greenhouse and I think Phil's perfectly correct in questioning all of that. But given the, given what is before us, given what the staff has done, given what the applicant has done by way of cooperation, I just feel, I am loath to send this back to the county who spent 15 or 20, $30,000 worth of staff time and come to the exact same result. That's me. I'm through. If you want to make a motion, go ahead.
I would, I would just like to take a chance to speak as well. Again, thank you very much for coming out. What I see is an operation that is crossing every T and dotting every I as a previous speaker mentioned. I want to make sure that what we do is, is supported by the law and that we're following what it is that we're sworn to uphold. And I, and in this case, not overstep that. I wanted to see if there was any movement on voluntarily adopting some of these alternatives with regard to the flare to alleviate concerns about greenhouse gases, ozone. Given the fact that last summer was the hottest summer that we've had and that we're expecting hot summers and perhaps hot springs and falls and, and so forth with global warming, I think that every opportunity we can take to make projects better, we should do. It sounds like the, the two things that I didn't have any information about, the reinjection, it doesn't sound like that's going to go anywhere. We've heard from, in oral testimony that it's not going to make sense from a geologic standpoint, that it's, it's a non-starter. And with regard to the beneficial use, that, that it might be, you know, economically infeasible, I think that is part of our charge. So, I'm inclined to just vote for the approval of the staff recommendations and allow this existing facility to continue to operate in the manner that it has been.
I would be willing to make that motion to approve staff recommendations of PL 15.
Before you do that.
Okay, sir.
Phil?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have an opportunity to speak on this. Go ahead. No, you had strong feelings.
Well, I, you know, I, I feel like we're due to, to have a little more information on the, the issues that are before us, emissions and truck traffic. My, my proposed motion was to have some more analysis on that before we, before we say yea or nay on this project. I still feel that way.
You're free to make a motion.
Well, I did.
Well, make it again.
I did, but I, you already have one on the floor and a second.
Well, are you withdrawing your motion if you've made one?
No, I'm not.
Where are we, folks? We?
You're the, yeah, if there's no second, then, then it won't.
All right. Phil made a motion. Is there a second? Hearing none. Is there another motion?
I would move that we approve staff recommendations as existed on for PL 150187.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. I bet you're excited now, Anna. Thank you, folks. I know it's been a long day.
Can I, can I speak up?
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to, want the record to show that the reason I voted no is I am concerned about air quality impacts and greenhouse gas emissions and about the truck routing in the Ojai Valley.
Chair Anstott, members of the commission, there is an esteemed member of the county family for which today is his last day. He's worked 36 years for the county at, at the Air Pollution Control District. He's the author of the air quality assessment guidelines, that is the original ones in 1989 and all subsequent revisions. And today he completes 36 years of service. I want to point out Chuck Thomas is sitting back here.
Chuck?
With, with all the respect I can muster for Director Viegas, Chuck Thomas is the APCD. Thank you.
All right. Planning commission hearing documents.
I guess that would be me. Jeff Barnes, County Council's office. So, this item was placed on the agenda by a vote of your commission. Chair Anstott raised the issue, which is whether your commission should recommend that the board consider establishing reasonable parameters in, in terms of both the timeline and I think page limits regarding the submittal of documents in advance of hearings before your planning commission. And so, just to give you a little background, when, when your commission asked, asked me to look into it, I reached out to county council. I'm part of a county council association. And so, I, I sent out a message on our county council forum asking if other counties do this. I didn't get any response. And, but, but that being said, several of my colleagues said, oh, what a great idea. Yeah, can we do this? And I know at least one county, Siskiyou County, which is in the far north of the state, does this and a court in a published CEQA decision basically, the, the issue wasn't whether or not they could do it, but the court just said, oh, yeah, well, this is, this is what their rules are. And so, it kind of worked its way into the decision a little bit, but the court didn't say that the county couldn't do it. But closer to home, the city of Ventura, their land use hearing rules do contain those sorts of requirements. And so, I can outline the, the city of Ventura's approach because I think that's, that's what Chair Anstott, you had in mind. And legally, I'm, our county does obviously have the authority to have our own land use hearing rules and legally, it's my opinion that, that we can adopt these, these sorts of requirements. The, there are potential legal downs. There are potential legal downsides.
Due process or what?
No, well, it's, okay, so theoretically due process. I'm not as concerned about that. You know what, let me, I'm sorry, I don't have a prepared presentation today. I've been very busy, but, all right, let me summarize what the city of Ventura does just so, to, to give you an idea. So, the, the city of Ventura's land use hearing rules state that regular submissions in advance of public hearings be submitted 10 days before the hearing and there's no page limit for the submissions. And their rules also require, and it's kind of interesting because this issue came up today with, with late submittals and not enough copies being made. So, the city's rules require the submitting party to provide X amount of copies as well. And so, the, the city doesn't, clerk doesn't have to go through the trouble of making a bunch of copies. I'm not sure if that would be as much of an issue for us because we're so electronic based. In any case, so 10-day limit, 10-day limit before the hearing, no page limit for regular submissions and then rebuttal submissions. So, these are, the idea is that these are submissions responding to the regular submissions that another party has offered. The time limit for those are 48 hours before the hearing with a 10-page limit. And again, their rules require 15 copies being sent to the clerk's office and then the clerk obviously distributes those to the, the planning commissioners. And then day of hearing submissions, those are limited to two pages. And so, that, the purpose of that is obviously to avoid document dumps when your commission doesn't have enough time to, to wade through a thousand pages. And I've advised you in the past, when that happens, you're under no obligation to give any continuance and, you know, say, you know, well, we'll start the hearing in five hours after I go through these materials. And what I've, what I've advised you before is to put the onus on the submitting party to tell you in two minutes or less what their point is and what they want you to focus on. And so, if they want to, you know, send you to page 995 to look at something, then the onus is on them, in my opinion. And so, anyway, so that, that, that kind of concept is built into the, the city's rules. And so, legally, I don't think there's a due process issue because you're giving everyone the right to submit what they want to submit. And, but you're just limiting the page amount and it, seeing how this played out today, there's almost a due, due process argument on the other side. If, if you're, if you're dumping lots of documents and, you know, for instance, today the, the people who are against the project or wanted improvements to the project submitted documents that the applicant hadn't seen. And so, I had to go give them a copy. And so, it's like, here, what do you think about this? And, so having a process like the city's would, in theory, protect the due process rights of both sides. And so, anyway, so getting, getting to the, the meat of it then, what happens with non-compliant submissions? The city's rules state that submissions which don't comply with the requirements that I just summarized will be entered into the record but not delivered to the planning commission. These submissions, these submissions will be stamped file copy, non-compliant submission and placed into the official case record or case file, but the planning commission will be under no obligation to consider the evidence contained in any non-compliant submission. And so, your commission could, if there's a late submission and we had these rules, you could ask to see them and I guess you could even ask, I know you could ask for a continuance if you thought they were important, but you would be under no obligation to do so. And so, what I was getting at before, I kind of got ahead of myself is the, the biggest potential legal risk, but I haven't seen that, us even getting close to this since I've been doing this for six years, is if, if someone does offer voluminous record on the day of the hearing or one day before, no one has time to look at it. Under CEQA, they can make all the arguments and submit all the substantial evidence that they want until the hearing is closed. And so, there's a risk, but again, I haven't seen this play out, but there's a risk that there, there's evidence in the record that supports their CEQA argument that, that your commission wouldn't have considered. I haven't seen that happen, but it's, it's possible. And so, then that would play out into a CEQA lawsuit. I haven't seen any cases addressing that, but it's just, it's a risk. People could make due, due process arguments, but again, I, I think it's mostly a policy decision for your commission and, and the board of supervisors to make whether you would like the county council's office to look into this issue further and draft up some rules like these for our own land use hearing rules. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, I'm sorry, I don't have a PowerPoint or a formal presentation.
Kim? You want to chime in?
Well, Chair Anstott, I would say from a staffing perspective, I think that that would be very helpful to us. I mean, so I noted in this hearing alone today where we're talking about, you know, nine existing oil wells and, and one trip, we've spent over 30 hours of county staff time between the planning department, the APCD, the transportation department, county council. And so, if, if, if it wasn't for, you know, Ms. Tribaka being here at 7 o'clock this morning when I got here, Jennifer got here, Christina got in here, we wouldn't have seen the sea frog letter and have been able to prepare a, a response to, to give to you to add to the record. Right? So, that, that, that is hard for us to do, to, to respond to something that we get that late at night, but we want to be able to. We want to understand if we've missed everything. We want to carefully consider all the information, whether it's late or not, and we want to be able to provide the, the, the planning commission with the best information as possible. And we want to see if we made an error somehow, right? So, we want to look through it carefully. Although, you know, I, I have written a letter with a concern to the city of Ventura. My three-page letter was returned to me and said, try again, two pages. And I said, okay, I can be succinct, right? So, so that, that's happened to me before. I don't think that that's a bad idea. I, I've saw Kimberly Rivers over here nodding. Perhaps she doesn't think that's a bad idea either, you know? So, I think anything that we can do to, to help the, the public process to, you know, move information expediently through is, is helpful. On the other hand, I can completely understand, you know, from On the other hand, I can completely understand, you know, from perhaps an appellate's perspective, is they get the staff report at the same time you do on Thursday, that means they only have until the next Thursday to get it together. So if they had weekend plans, right, and they were leaving, then they're probably typing Monday or Tuesday to try to get some useful information to you. So, I mean, it's a tough, it's a tough issue, and it's a, that's why we're giving it to you. That's a policy issue, right? You'll have to struggle with that, the board will have to struggle with that. I think there's pros and cons to both sides.
So what does the board do? Same thing we do?
Same thing you do. Yeah, the land use rules are the same.
As a practical matter, when something like this is going to be calendared and it comes in, you've got your work done or completed, how much notice does the appellate, for instance, have of the pending hearing? How much, I mean, how much notice is given to the parties and when this thing is scheduled usually? I can't imagine you doing it a short period of time.
You mean when we're going to schedule an appealing?
Yeah, I mean, when you're going to schedule it? A month down the road at availability, it comes, nothing's done in a short period of time.
No, nothing is done in a short period of time. So even to schedule the hearing, I mean, you know, we have to have your availability, our availability, the appellate's availability, you know, we have to have, you know, everybody together. So, no, nothing happens in less than a month, right? For the most part.
Well, so people are generally aware of what's going on to get their ducks in line. And the staff report typically comes out unless it's something really significant we requested earlier, the week before, basically, right?
Right. I would make that case for an appeal, right? So you filed an appeal, so clearly you've thought about that for those ten days. And by the time we schedule a hearing in the next month, then you have had all of that time to consider what you're wanting. So, or, you know, the points that you're trying to make. My more concern would be, you know, if you were a member of the community and had just seen it, and or just gotten your postcard, if you were on Creek Road or something and just seen it, and then, you know, were out of town for the weekend and wanted a comment, you know, that we would want to, you know, be careful that we were allowing for those types of public input as well.
On those land use matters where you're required to notice adjacent property owners, what kind of notice do they get?
Ten days before the hearing.
Ten days?
Yes.
So is this idea of just limiting it to two pages a fair compromise?
But two pages? They could ask some horrific questions in two pages. I don't know.
Yeah. So, I mean, so that's just one example of how one jurisdiction does it, right? And so, and I did chat with their planning director, and he seems to think that that works really well for them. But, you know, that said, it is, it's a scramble, you know, to get something in the morning. I hadn't seen Mr. Colom's report, nobody had, right? So we are all passing it around here, and as much as we want to pay attention to everything that's happening, you know, we're all, everybody here now is scanning the reports and trying to figure out, is there something in there? Did we miss something? When we really want to be listening to the testimony as well. So that does make it, it makes it difficult.
And then I guess just one other consideration under SEQA is when you're dealing with a negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration or environmental impact report, that SEQA process has public comment, a public comment period that happens well before the public hearing. But in contrast, when you're dealing with an addendum to a previous environmental SEQA document like we had today, there is no public comment period like that. And so they would, you know, people have the same ten days to react to that as they do to the staff report. So, just wanted to put that out there.
Kimberly, come on up. I'm sitting on the other side of this. What do you think?
So for the record, Kimberly Rivers, Executive Director of Sea Frog. And I just want to know, want you to know that I am fully aware of the impetus for this and that there's been late submittals. And so just to state that, should you come up with any rules that are clear, we will abide by them and will be happy to do so. But from our perspective, so I guess if I understood correctly, the city of Ventura requires documents be submitted ten days before the hearing, and I think it was mentioned, but I'll point out, the staff doesn't provide their final report until a week before the hearing. And what we do is we look for that staff report, and we then prepare our documents to respond to that for the hearing. So, yes, we may have notice of the hearing, because we work with the planning department to get that date as soon as possible. So we may have several weeks, month or more. You know, right now, we know that there's a hearing in early December, so we know it's there, but the staff report that will come out a week before that is going to have information that we are going to look at and respond to at that public hearing. So, you know, if you're going to say, "We got to do it ten days before the hearing," is staff going to submit theirs two weeks before the hearing? So just to keep some of those things in mind. Also, I think if you have rules that are clear to the public about if you're going to present something at the hearing to make copies, I think that would be helpful to know, and a page limit, I think, is reasonable. And also maybe, I like the provision, not under obligation to consider, but that it will be part of the administrative record. And I'll just let you know that Sea Frog has submitted documents with that intention, right? So there's executive summaries that we would say that's the first page that is intended for you to read and understand that, and then our presentation is prepared to kind of go into the points that we want to make, but that if there's a stack of documents, it's personally not my expectation that the planning commissioners read two-hundred pages of stuff that's submitted, just to be really frank about that. So just to give you that perspective. The other question I would have is about slide presentations. So for example, the slide presentation the county gave today, I didn't see that in advance. And so being able to respond to that, there might be something, and sometimes there is data and information that we might respond to at the hearing over the course of a half-day hearing. We can find it on the computer, we can email it in. I know there was even at the last hearing, there was a court case that Mr. Barnes printed out and gave to you, that he spoke to you about. And so to give the public that same opportunity, right, to endeavor to not restrict the public's ability to bring data and information and reports is also really important. And one last point is the environmental justice issue. So with land use and the state of California, kind of, I guess, diving into that with legislation in terms of land use and environmental justice and linking that, I would really encourage you to, again, be mindful in recognizing that folks who might not have access to digital ways of getting you documents and making fifteen copies could be commenting on things and that. You should be doing everything you can to encourage that and support them in bringing that information to you. And those are my comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chair Anstott and the Commission, my name is Bryant Baker. I'm the Conservation Director for Los Padres Forest Watch. You guys are probably familiar with our organization. We work to protect the Los Padres National Forest and other public lands in the region. We have been a part of this public comment process many times, as you are well aware. And so of course, we're very interested in any changes that may occur to this process. We've mentioned it, and I really want to echo what Kimberly said, mostly. I mean, I pretty much fully agree with everything she said. And so what I'm going to say is actually going to reiterate some of those things. We talked about the ten-day period that Ventura, the city of Ventura has, and as we've mentioned, you know, the documents, the staff report and the supporting documents, those come out less than ten days ahead of a hearing. And this is, these are really important for the public to be able to fully digest what is going to be discussed at a hearing and be able to effectively establish some comments that they can either send in or even come and present in front of the commission at the hearing. So if there's going to be a shift in the cutoff for when comments can be submitted, there should be a proportional shift in how early these documents are available. So if we're operating on this about one week out or less than five business days before these hearings, and we shift to something like ten days, that being sort of a cutoff date for being able to submit your full comments, then the staff report and the supporting documents, they should be released ten days sooner, or a proportional amount. And so, you know, we think, because you aren't meeting on a weekly basis, it seems like it's roughly once, once or twice a month, that hopefully there could be a staff report and supporting documents released maybe two weeks prior to a hearing, to fully give the chance for the public to digest an issue and write effective comments. And, yeah, that's, you know, we understand why you need this, and that's it. That's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I used to work for the planning division, and I'm here speaking as a private citizen. As you may recall, I've spent thirteen or eleven years, eight with the State Mining Board and three as a city councilman, as a decision maker. And the problem of the document dump reached its zenith, as Mr. Anstott and Commissioner Idoukas may remember, when six thousand pages of material was submitted the night before the Decor Oil Hearing. And Mr. Anstott was looking over the top of the stack of paper that we printed. And that issue actually occurred very similar at the State Mining and Geology Board. The rules there that were adopted is that you can submit anything you want up to seven days before the hearing, and then in the last seven days, you get one sheet of paper printed on both sides. But there is an issue I want to make you aware of. In the document dump, you cannot just allow documents in a giant pile to be submitted and say, "Put that in the record." And this was an issue that the State Attorney General's Office brought up in a hearing of that similar nature, where a person brought in boxes and boxes of material. It has to be inventoried, and there has to be a list of everything that's in the document dump. Otherwise, in the future, there's no set record. And they could slip other things in there later and claim that it was in that box of material that we turned in. And actually, at the Western States vested rights hearing up in Yuba County, literally six boxes of material were submitted and put on the floor of the hearing room and said, "Put that in the administrative record." And the State Attorney General said, "No, not without an inventory of everything that's in there in terms of what it is, title, how many pages, and all that." Because otherwise, you have a completely flexible administrative record for a project. And so it's now in your court.
Yes. County Council, if they don't make the timeline and they try the document drop, is there any requirement that we have to accept the documents? I know why you want to, but what good is it to put it, not utilize it, but put it in the administrative record, but create problems? I would just rather not accept it.
Right. The issue there is, like I said, under SEQA, people can comment up until the end of the public hearing itself.
Comment or drop documents?
I would say both. I would say both, and the administrative record is supposed to include everything that's submitted. And so...
How does that jive with the fact that we're not going to read it?
Right, yeah, and so it would basically...
So it's not going to be considered?
No, and so that, what happens there, you know, you're a lawyer, know how this would play out. If there's, if there's something buried on, you know, page five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine, some argument that no one made decision maker aware of, and then the party argues that's why they should win a SEQA case, then in court, you say, "Look, they didn't meet our submittal requirements, they didn't raise this to us, it's not fair that this is being used against us because we didn't have a fair opportunity to consider it." And so then that basically, kind of, for better for worse, becomes a legal defense for the agency. It's like, you know, this isn't fair. And so, but I'm not sure how a court would deal with that, but the idea is that it still should be in the record, whether or not, whether or not it's going to help the party is a separate issue. But I guess my point is, I'm just kind of talking in circles. My belief is SEQA requires us to put everything in the record, and I think we should, but then it's what credence does the evidence have, and is it fair to be used against the agency? And so that would just play out if there was litigation.
Can I offer some...
Jump in.
Regarding the Decor document dump, what I recall, and, were you here when we got that? I think we were. We handled it by taking a one-hour break just to get our eyeballs on it. And we were able to handle that document dump at the time, and the purpose of that, in my opinion, looking back on it, was to slow the process down and to have the commission say, "I haven't had a chance to read and consider this information." And it was a tactic to slow down the process, and it was unsuccessful. And it backfired, because, you know, it's irritating to be manipulated in that way as a decision maker. The two entities that are participating in the public process often now have not done that and have, you know, provided executive summaries for us so that we don't have to have, you know, close reading of what they offer to us that's not reasonable. It's absolutely doable, and, you know, our clerk does a tremendous job in getting it to us, getting information to us, even late submittals over the computer and through Dropbox. What I do find compelling is when Mr. Tribaka goes without sleep.
Sleep.
Goes without sustenance, goes without the warmth and comfort of his family, and has to, and has to provide really, over, over and beyond what I would expect in terms of a handling of the new information. Sometimes, like today, Mr. Colomay, I don't know if he's Dr. Colomay or not, his submittal was six pages long, and it was mostly questions, arguments, it wasn't evidence. And we were able to respond to his expert questions, you know, just verbally. We didn't need a report. So you've lavished us and you have made us accustomed to a level of, I don't know. Information, information, we've been lavish with information and analysis and that is beyond A-plus. And we don't need to do that. What we need to do is be able to be quick on our feet, we need to be able to read quickly and judge. And I think that my experience before I came onto this commission was in the city of Thousand Oaks that had a staff report that might come out just seventy-two hours before, whatever the legal limit was, and then you would scramble to get through all of their information and go, "Well, wait, they didn't consider this." And then you were drafting something up, by the time you got to it, the decision makers didn't even have it, because that was back in the twentieth century, and we had paper and, you know, people knocking on your door delivering reports. But what it did was, it soured the public's faith that they would actually have their day and that their voices would be heard. I mean, after all, these are hearings, and we are supposed to be able to take the information in and judge. I think we have, I can't, I can't recall another true document dump, and it was absolutely transparent. So we're solving a problem that, in my view, is largely, you know, not a problem, that we get last-minute letters. For example, I said, "Ooh, I got to get home and read this twenty-five pages," you know, I haven't, and it was the same form letter. You know, that's something that takes less than five minutes to go through. It's not onerous for me at all. And I am sympathetic to what the... not onerous for for me at all. And I am sympathetic to what the Planning Staff has to go through when they do have things that are that are substantive and that they need to respond to. But I think in some instances, for example, today, we were able to do that with testimony. And I don't think that it was a tactic. I do think that they were sincere, that they were out of town, and, you know, they came at the last minute. And we're responding to things that were presented, you know, just a week previously. So I I've heard before that noon before the day of the hearing was something that would be doable to 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 have that kind of, and I do think that's reasonable, to have your written submittals noon the day before the hearing, in order to just get eyeballs on it. And a lot of these things are just re-arguments and repackaged. All of the substantive information has been, every question has been asked, and they've been answered, we've got follow-up, and mostly we have everything. Very few times have there been, you know, new information. I think the the 48-hour, 10-page limit is completely unreasonable. I think day of the hearing, two pages is doable. Noon before the day of the hearing, with some kind of page limit, I think is is reasonable. But the 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 two days, I'm not really sure. When you consider that a week before, say, say there's just some person that that still is getting everything, you know, by paper, you know, they're they're coming out here, and they're they're looking at what's posted outside of this door, or they're depending on a neighbor, or, you know, all of these things that we take for granted, you know, the computer access perhaps is not available to them. And I think philosophically, it is a bad idea, given that this is the Planning Commission, and often, we are just a speed bump on the way to the Board of Supervisors. I think putting any kind of limitation beyond those is something contrary to what we want to do when we're dealing with the the public, that we want to welcome the public here. I think today was an outstanding example of how people were calm, people had their their points, we had different points of view, but there was just this very civil-issue-based, you know. And often, that's not the case. And, you know, people in other instances have ascribed, you know, ulterior motives, and people are in cahoots, and you're complicit with this industry and whatnot. And that's just not the case. But I want to make sure that what we do is something that still abundantly makes clear that we are here to listen, we're here to take in the information, consider it, use our best judgment to render fair decisions that are supported by the law, and and just good planning practice. So that's my point of view.
Go, Maggie.
Go ahead.
So I just want to make clear, if they weren't able to provide us with something written prior to the hearing, they still have the opportunity to come and speak that. So really, what we're talking about is not precluding them from being able to participate in this process. We're just trying to eliminate something happening that creates a lot of time and energy on staff. But also, when I get something in front of me that's written, I feel compelled to try to digest and write and read everything that's on there. And it does create quite an issue for me, when I have a career that I also have to manage, to read things that come to me at 10:30 at night, 11 o'clock at night. Sometimes, I don't see them, and they're sitting here in front of me when I get here in the morning. And I've already got other things that I've got to try to absorb. And then I have this document that's written, that I feel compelled to try to read every part, every part of it, because what if I've missed something that's important? If it's in front of me in writing, I do feel compelled to have to look at it, is all I'm saying. So, I mean, if if there's a deadline, we're not precluding the public from being able to come here and speak. They can stand there and tell us what they were going to put to us in writing.
A lot of people have, you know, work issues, childcare issues. It's it's hard, especially, gosh, if you're the second hearing, and, you know, we've had something that goes late, you know, and they spent, they just blow the entire morning. And we've had that, where people have had to leave.
We had that a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. And it's and it and this is an equal opportunity. This this is not just opponents to a project. These are, you know, applicants that are are still having issues with, you know, perhaps that there are still unresolved issues in in conditions, or, you know, other things that they're they're still trying to get their last word in. So I I do think that this communicates, this communicates an unwillingness. You might disagree. But I've been on the other side of this, and I've had extreme frustration at not being able to have my points submitted and and considered, because they didn't, they didn't meet this artificial and really impossible standard.
Don't make it impossible. Maggie, Maggie, if Maggie tests, they can, they can show up. If we get, you know, if someone's legitimately surprised by something or doesn't have time to prepare on a matter of significance, they get on the phone and call Kim and say, we need to do A, B, C, and D, and it's important. Kim gets on the phone and calls me, we've got a request for a continuance, and it seems well-funded or well-founded. Well, we're probably going to pull everybody, and we may well continue the matter. I mean, has happened before. But I'm unwilling to subject the staff to what they're having to go through, and myself, too, for that matter. I don't know, when you pick a hearing date, if you took into consideration a a document production period, too. I mean, you know, say you pick the first of next month, knowing that you'll get the, you can get a staff report out, you know, a week or what, 10 days before, if you take that into consideration. Then we pick the 10 days, and if the 10 days doesn't work, and then the two-day or one-page, whatever is fine, they can appear and testify. Oh, that's me. Anyway. I just don't want to submit the staff to this any longer. I think it's a travesty. I do. It's horrible. The court system adopted a much different approach and has for the 40 years that I practiced, and long before that. It's unconscionable to have the trial effect, or the people involved have to stay up all night, when someone could have easily submitted something in prior time. And if it if it is truly exceptional, or something new, they can request a continuance. And I know Kim Pohlhart, she's going to probably recommend it be granted. So, I mean, I'm still on 10 days, seven days, and then I don't, I think the City of Ventura is trying us. We may not get in a perfect situation, but we can always change it if it doesn't work. But I definitely want to do it. My only problem is, I don't want to accept a document dump the day of, because I don't know what the hell that does for me, except clutter up the clerk's office, because you're not going to pay any attention to it. I don't know what it does for you.
Except, except we did. Except, indeed, we did. We had, I don't know, six or seven pages of questions from an expert in air quality standards.
Where was this, where was this person a week ago, or three days ago, or whatever? You think he has his first notice of it?
Probably some gorgeous South Pacific island, you know? He probably has a life that we can only imagine.
Well, I'd like our staff to have a life.
There's got to be a compromise.
There is, yeah, there has to be a compromise.
I offered one.
I didn't like yours.
Forty-eight hours to be, it's reasonable. Forty-eight to 72 hours.
Yeah, two days, two days in advance of the hearing. And if they're going to submit something that day, make it a page. They're going to be here anyway. They couldn't, couldn't they just say whatever they're going to say?
What can I...
You're up, kid.
Thank you. So I actually think that's totally reasonable for me and the organization that I work with. And and but again, I'm going to consider that there are different people who have different resources, different language abilities. And while I am totally comfortable, if in a 48-hour window, going, oh, my gosh, this is a big problem, I got to call Kim, I can do that. That's really easy for me. But maybe it's not easy for a single mom who maybe doesn't speak English very well, but goes, oh, my, you know, I can imagine that there are scenarios where that would be hard for a person to do what you described.
So can I. And, you know, anytime you draw a line, someone's on the other side of it. I don't care where it is, or what it is.
We just have to find one that's reasonable.
Yeah.
I I agree that the 48 hours, two days makes sense. It's not as short as your suggestion, but seems reasonable. And and I agree that staff shouldn't have to be up in the middle of the night responding to late stuff.
So?
Can I say one thing? Brian Baker from Forest Watch again. So are are we saying that comments would be due, written comments would be due, two hour, two, two, two days, 48 hours?
We're not saying or asking anything, we're just discussing it.
Sure.
Some of us said two days seems to be reasonable. That's all we've done.
So so I would just, again, iterate that if there's going to be a two-day prior to the hearing limit for a comment deadline, that that the public should receive the staff report and the supporting documents at least two days earlier than they've been receiving them. So that would, that would mean 48 hours before, the Thursday before the hearing. That that's the only point I would like to make.
I wouldn't mind having it two days earlier either.
And I actually, and and my other point would be that the the public, as we've talked about, you know, they they need as much time as they possibly can to be able to properly digest issues that affect land near them, or land that they care about. And so, you know, you know, improving this timeline for the public would be beneficial across the board, I think. So, thank you.
Kim, what can you do? What can you anticipate? Getting the hearing date out and getting the staff report out, how many days before a hearing? I mean, how do you, can you do something there? Can you come up with something reasonable?
So, yeah, sure. We could back everything up a couple of days. So instead of getting it out Thursday, we could get it out Tuesday. But it would be funny, if if any of you were up in the, up in our offices, you know, the Thursday at 5:00, when we're madly loading up these giant documents. I mean, it takes a long time to load them up, to put them on the website, to put all of the exhibits together. And then for the PowerPoint, I mean, sometimes these PowerPoints aren't done until the night before. I mean, we're not doing them in advance, because we're so concerned about that Thursday deadline, that the PowerPoint, in many, most instances, waits till completely after all of our legal requirements are done, and then we start kind of focusing on that. So, you know, that said, it's a, it's a mad scramble for our staff, because not only are we doing it for the Planning Commission, but we're doing it for the Board, and we're doing it for the Cultural Heritage Board, the Mobile Home Rent Review Board, and the Planning Director Hearing. So all of those hearings are clicking away every week. And so, all of these agendas for for poor Anna and Megan here, I mean, it's, it's a daunting task. And so, you know, so that said, I I would be willing, because I've always been very sympathetic to the public data, and really to the Board, when, you know, you, the Board gets their agenda on Thursday for a Tuesday meeting. So we get ours out Thursday for a Thursday meeting. So that that's quite a long time in the public realm. A lot of, a lot of cities and agencies aren't able to do that. That said, I think it's a public process, and the more time we give the public to to digest what we're writing is a is a better idea. It would take me a while. So first, you would have to propose, you know, what it is that you're proposing to the Board, and the Board would have to adopt the land use rules, and they would have to agree to everything. And then I would have to figure out the timing where I could back things up. And in so, in this instance, it would only be backing things up for the for the Planning Commission and the Board, and the the Planning Commission and the Planning Director Hearings. I'm not sure the Board at all would want to undertake their Thursday, Tuesday rule, right? That's, that's a big issue for them. And that's a massive undertaking, when you roll up the entire county to the clerk of the Board, and he's not here, but he would, I see his car at 9:00 at night out there, you know, on the date that his that his agenda is due. And so, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure, even if we could wrestle with the Planning Director Hearings and the Planning Commission, the Board item is a much bigger item to getting things early, right?
Sure.
Well, so it just strikes me even about the idea of having guidelines. There's that helpful word again.
Just guidelines.
And see how that helps to compel folks to say, you know, the Planning Commission...
I mean, what if we just announced the policy was two days prior to the hearing? Submit.
But like, so that there's guidelines, so that those of us who are able to get it in 48 hours before, and that, you know, we can strive for that. And then that creates also the flexibility for those folks who don't have the resources that we might have, so that even if someone were to show up at a public hearing with six, or seven, or eight, or 10 pages to you, going, you know, my name's so-and-so, I just found out about this, and I live out in wherever, and I don't have internet, and here's, you know, and I was only able to make five copies, I'm so sorry, you know, like, that you have guidelines that go, okay, we can accept that today, if that seems reasonable, versus a hard and fast thing that seems to exclude those type of situations. I'm just presenting that.
Would you prefer that, Nora?
I, um, I stand by the 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 morning. I'll back it up to 8:00 AM before, before the hearing.
But if it's not a mandate, it's a directive.
It's a guideline.
Voluntary compliance.
Yeah. See, and we saw how that, and you saw how that went over.
Well, usually, it will only be someone who wants to do a document drop, or force a continuance, or play a procedural game.
And and again, that really hasn't happened that often. What has happened is that we'll we'll get something, and we'll get a report from staff that is, they just are so excellent. And there isn't the necessity, we, we had proof of that today, that there, that all we need to do is hear the the issue and and hear the the response. I just, you know, I...
Isn't it better to have it both be verbal, from the person that has the information and then staff providing it, and it being presented to us and writing with nothing in writing everybody?
It just comes back to a point, you know, philosophical point for me, is that we're just a speed bump. And anything that we can do to, you know, I've already said this.
Yep, you said it.
And Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, this has, this has to go to the Board of Supervisors. I mean, they're just going to take our discussion, correct? We're not making a formal motion, or are we?
That, you know, that's, that's, and it just went right, I didn't even think about what Director Pohlhart said about how the the Board's on a different schedule. And so I haven't thought about, and can maybe have ideas. I mean, maybe if we're just doing rules or guidelines that, you know, aren't even binding, really, just for the Planning Commission, then maybe it wouldn't have to go to the Board. I haven't thought about that, because your commi, your commission has its own bylaws. And so, maybe we could work it into that. So I, and if that's the case.
I'd be willing to try the non-binding guidelines, and see if that solves some of the problems.
I would be supportive of that.
Does that come with a page limit?
Comes with whatever you want.
Well, I would like there to be something about the font size, if there was a page limit, because there's no way I can read like things like that.
Trust me, Nora.
Perfect. Yeah, but for, you've got to expand the page limit. Yeah, to 25.
I need to be able to read it. What, what would be reasonable?
Day of, I say two pages minimum.
Is that, is that, Council, what's it, what did they do on a two-page day prior to the hearing, or the day of the hearing?
Yeah, yeah, two, two pages, the day of the hearing, 10 pages, 48 hours, and no limit 10 days before.
I would, I would make a motion that we try that. Just try it. Just try it. Or at least, I don't know who you have to run it by.
Non-binding.
Non-binding.
I agree.
Like a please do this.
No, I wouldn't say please.
These are.
No, I just.
Guidelines.
Those are our rules. They don't comply with.
They don't comply.
Well, what, um.
What do we, what do we have to do procedurally here?
What Mike Westner always said was, "Take it, take it with the, you know, give it its due consideration," whatever its due was.
The circular file.
Uh, I just think, you know, scanning it, having the questions asked, I really don't see a lot of times, this is, this is not a problem for us.
Well, I think it is. It's a problem for staff, so I'm totally unwilling.
That I, that I concede.
What if we did just, what's that? Two days prior, ten days, anything prior to that, whatever they want us to bid, no restriction, but two days prior, a couple pages and then the day of, one that I don't care.
So, yeah, I think that that would help, um, just for us to be able to, to review it and, and as Commissioner Duke has said, to put some eyes on it. Because I, um, like Commissioner Kessley, feel uncomfortable about having one side of an argument in the administrative record of the document, because I'm constantly doing forensics, right? Ten years, twenty years, fifty-year files, and I'm like, "What was the end of that story?" Right? Here's, here's a zinger of a letter in the file, yet I don't see the county's response or anything. And so then there's a lot of scrambling around to go, "What, what was the end of that story?" And we spend a lot of time, which is, which is why we, we try to put everything in writing that we can for the administrative record, not only, um, for the Planning Commission, that it might be going to the Board, but it might be going to court, right? And, and it's all based on the administrative record. What did we say and when did we say it and how did we respond? So it's important to me that, that we are, um, that we're able to respond, but I would say also, you know, with Mr. Baca's, um, ultimate departure, you know, I, I don't have that kind of, um, you know, I don't have that staff that's just going to be able to do that in thirty minutes, right? And that kind of memory that he has is, it's obscene. I can't, I've never seen anybody that can recall every date, every CUP number, every condition. I mean, it's, it's really extraordinary. So we have been able to provide that kind of service. So two things will happen, you know, the, you know, maybe we won't be able to do that anymore. But if we had two days to do it, we, we, we could. And it's important that we're, that we're not just looking at something that comes in. Just because it comes in at ten-thirty at night doesn't mean I'm not going to give it some very serious consideration, because if I don't give it serious consideration for this hearing, it may come back the next hearing, right, in front of the Board, where I'm like, "Oh, where's that letter I didn't review very carefully because it came in late?" Right? So I feel like I need to review everything that comes in and staff needs to review it. So if we had two days, one day, the day before at noon, any time before the morning is very helpful to us.
I just want to make clear, I read every last word that people say. I just didn't gift it to be able to read really quickly. So, um, it's, it's not that I'm saying that, that I don't, that I don't read the late submittals, except the six thousand pages where I went through, um, you know, and, and performed, you know, a statistical analysis on the fly on whether or not it was actually something that was before us or whether it was just background information. But we're able to do that. Everything is read.
Well, I'll make a motion that there's no restriction on the amount they drop until two days before, and in that case you want ten days and the day, what, the day of or the day one-page submittal?
You said two, just, you said forty-eight hours, ten pages on that, day of hearing, two page.
Whatever you guys want. I, I would like to try something and see if they won't, people won't voluntarily go along with it. And I guess if they submit that document drop that day, we'll make County Counsel happy and we'll put it in his office to store. Anyway, that's my motion. What? Okay. Responsive documentation, any, you know, no limitation prior to, two days before, but then the two-day period, ten pages, the day of. You want two pages, Nora? Hello, Nora?
That's what.
I don't care what they did, what do you want? Two days?
If you have, if you have two pages and you have size six font, you're going to be sorry.
I'll take my chances.
I'll second that motion.
And I guess, I'm sorry to, I, are you talking about guidelines now?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not talking about amending the land use rules?
I don't want to say, you know, frame it, though, these are, yeah.
Okay, and I'd be happy to, to draw that up. And so the, the next step would be, I, I do need to confirm that, and not, not to take anything away from your commission, but I just do need to confirm that you have the authority to, to do your own guidelines without having the Board do it for you. But if you can, then, then I'll, either way, I'll either bring back guidelines, draft guidelines, or I'll come back and say, "We, you, you need to make a recommendation to the Board." I just, so at this, at this point, that's, I think that's all we can do. That's all I'm prepared to say today.
Maggie, you were, you were at that board meeting. What, what was their desire?
They kicked it back to us to discuss.
What a surprise.
And come back to them with what we recommend.
Yeah, I'm not going to reckon, I'm, I'm not in support of this.
Well, and, and the document drop the day of, I'd like to know if we have to accept it or not. Give it some more thought, would you?
Into the administrative record? Okay, I will.
Is it my motion or was it yours, maybe?
It was your motion, I seconded it.
We have a motion and a second. You want to talk about this?
Anna, did you, I, I'm sorry, I, I'm.
I'm sorry.
So two days before, did you say, are you talking, doing something like the city where you have a ten-page limit?
Ten-page limit.
When, the day of, two pages?
Two pages.
Okay. And so that, that's it? Okay.
Yep, we're ready. We're hungry. Is there anything else? Kim, do you have anything?
So just very quickly, under Agenda Item Eight for Discussion, I, I just want to conform, um, the agenda for your upcoming hearing. So you do have quite a busy agenda. You have a, an October twenty-sixth, um, hearing where it's for the county-initiated proposal to amend the Ventura County non-coastal zoning ordinance and the coastal zoning ordinance as it relates to the prohibition on commercial cannabis. Um, we're going to have probably a very long day on November the ninth, where the only item on the agenda is the general plan update, so we'll be bringing back the, the background report, um, the vision and guiding principles. And so we've, uh, there's a, um, a poll that was done, that we're going to be bringing you the results of that as well. So there's a lot of information that we're going to be bringing you in order to, um, get this item to the Board. We also have a November sixth, um, CUP variance that is going to be, I'm sorry, November the sixteenth, November the sixteenth?
You meant December?
December or November?
December.
I have it on here for November the sixteenth.
Oh, sixteen.
November the sixteenth, right? So that should already be on your tentative. And then I also have a December seventh, um, condition use permit for, uh, holding of temporary outdoor events and festivals.
What was on the sixteenth, Kim?
The sixteenth is a CUP time extension and a variance.
For what?
That is for a site out in Oakview and it's, the variance has to do with an outdoor storage issue.
Okay.
It's like a hardware store, I believe.
On the twenty-sixth, it's only three points.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything further?
Nope, that's it. Thank you very much.
Commissioner, do you have anything?
Well, I was going to ask, um, I was going to ask Jeffrey whether or not, uh, he wanted to share with us, uh, the Wayne J. Gravel.
I already told him.
Case.
I'm not, that decision is not in its final form, so I think he would probably wait for another.
So it's premature.
Jeff hasn't left yet, his coat's still on.
It's, it's premature. That's, that's fine.
That's it?
Good job, Stephen.